Ninety-three percent of the hospital are unvetted. Seven percent have been vetted.
I don't want to be mean, but quite honestly, it's almost natural consequences.
Kiwanis is really understaffed for the breakfasts.
They're more concerned about.
Yeah.
How many people do you guys have?
When I was president, we had four hundred and fifty members, plus three members.
How many people do you need to do the breakfasts?
Twenty guys and sports scouts.
We'll be all right.
People will step up.
Anything to drop is recently dropped.
You know, we've had a lot of sounds.
It's the same with Rotary. Rotary used to beat eight or nine hundred people and they're down to under three hundred.
Why is? And the young people don't join up.
Yeah, younger people aren't volunteering.
No, they have no interest.
Doesn't involve drinking beer or going much.
Oh, we.
Wait a minute, you described my whole life.
Have you been to the bus? Have you guys ever been to the pancake?
Oh, that's right.
That's like the end of the break, when you get off the buggy or the horses.
And there's a little bus around by a box. And that's where all the parking, you know, duct tape or a hammer or a Bloody Mary. You know.
Yep.
That's where the troops are watered.
Yeah, but see, that's.
Not anymore.
Of the bus, pancake, breakfast. Some railroaders had a. Back weight is on the. They would bring this.
Some guy back there just making.
You know, the first aid kit. For our age group, that's probably needed.
Andrew, let me ask you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rabel.
You're six months in. Sir, you're six months in, right?
Six months in now. May, June.
I don't think he was late.
Three thoughts.
I'm going to share those with you today. I am. You want a pay rate?
Oh, I don't think we want a huge pieces, do we?
Well. No. Who does it work?
I think I know the gist of yesterday. Shut up. I heard that some folks, some folks are pretty boisterous.
Yeah.
And really. That's one of those issues. I think, you know, after small conversations and if we do.
You know. She was like, we're not the first city to do.
And then I think we need to get reloaded and so I'm excited about that. Master Chief Andy here is is agreeing to help us tonight and Andy, thank you for doing that. Let's let's do this.
All right. So first, I will tell you this, when when Mayor Collins asked me to facilitate this meeting, I had a couple of thoughts. One was when I was in the service, we didn't come up with a new course every day on things to do, and I don't think that's what we need to do as a governing body in order to serve the citizens of Cheyenne the best. What we did on the submarine was course correct. Course correct as we went down the path, we set goals on January twentieth and twenty-first of this year, what we wanted to accomplish this year. And I think we're in a in a pretty good, pretty good trajectory to accomplish almost everything that we wrote down. We're going to review that today because that's another thing that I have done my entire career is write my goals down. If they're not written down, they're they're not goals, they're wishes. That's what the behavioral psychologists will tell you. So we write them down. You guys wrote them down. I have the packet right here that you guys wrote down, and we're going to go through what you wrote and look at what we did. That's the other important piece of writing the goal is, did we accomplish what we said we were going to accomplish? And if if not, what course corrections do we need to make? Or maybe there's some goals that we need to drop and then we'll close out the night by looking at what new goals we need to add to our list. Here's was probably the most impactful thing that I saw in that report. And it was your idea on what communication needs to be and what the the issues were with communicating, what gets in our way as a governing body when we are trying to work on things. And this is what you guys said. Silos, social media, lack of transparency and trust, arrogance, posture, lack of respect and living in the past. These are the things that that get in the way of good communication. And the biggest challenge was the courage to say what you actually think face to face in person. And then time was the last piece that was up here. Before we started this meeting, Councilman Royball asked me, Andy, you've been here for about four months now. What do you think? And I want to take these issues up here that you wrote on communication and share with you what I think. If we go back to April and I sat in my first city council meeting as the chief of staff, I've sat in one before. Actually got in trouble in one before, but that was two thousand and four. So that one doesn't count. I didn't even live here. So here's what I think, Mr. Rabel, is I have watched a group of individuals come together as a governing body and work hard for the betterment of the citizens and the families and the residents and the businesses of Cheyenne. I I remember in my first meeting, sitting in that back row back there next to a friend, and I wrote on my paper, oh, my gosh. These guys are disagreeing and they're doing it civilly. I will probably keep that sheet of paper because I follow my city government and it's not always that way. So the teamwork was incredible. And then I remember in my second meeting, my second council meeting, as I got up to leave my councilman, I'm a ward three kind of guy, so kind of partial to Dr. Aldrich and Mr. Escobell. My councilman walked off the dais, came up to me and said, who are you? Because I'm sitting, you see, I sit back there and I'm furiously taking notes for things that maybe we need to act on up in the mayor's office. And I said, the mayor's chief of staff. He's like, oh, I just, I just wondered because you're up there writing notes. So I guess the mayor's and then he said to me, I guess the mayor is going to be pretty mad at me today. Because in that meeting, Councilman Johnson had been the one no vote on a couple of issues. I've been the one guy to dissent in this group. And his assumption was I dissented, so therefore I'm going to be ostracized, mistreated. However, we as a society treat people that don't get on board with what we're thinking. But the truth is, your job, our job is to make the best decisions possible for the citizens of Cheyenne, and you can't do that without uncovering all the information. And you don't uncover all the information unless people are free to say what they actually think, what they actually see. And what I've watched you guys do is exactly that, create a culture and environment in here where people can say what they actually believe with no repercussions. And if you guys can keep that in place, the next three and a half years are going to be awesome for the businesses and residents that live here in Cheyenne. So, Mr. Ruggel, that's what I think so far.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Here's the code of conduct for the meeting today. Everything on the list that we end up with tonight must contribute to improving the quality of life for the residents of Cheyenne. That's not my rule. That's your rule. That's the rule that you guys made in January. And as if I take my chief of staff hat off and I put my resident hat on, I love that rule. Because that's what I'm hoping you guys do. That's why I vote in hopes that that's what will happen. Some unwritten code of conducts that I'm going to bring to you from my military days are if your phone rings, that's a fifty dollar fine. And that money goes to the chief of staff fund for taking care of employees. And that's it. So that's the rules. And here we go. So buckle in because we're going to go through this part pretty quick. If you don't celebrate your accomplishments, they're not accomplishments. They get lost. And that's where I want to start today. We we divided up the goals into about eight different areas, and I'm going to go through each one of them today. Infrastructure is where we'll start. You made a goal of updating computer systems, determining if the CARES Act funding is available for a system to allow for paying for permits and fees online for the planning and development departments. I will quit reading slides for you. You guys could read them yourself, but did we accomplish this one? I don't think we did yet, right? This is still in progress and we're only six months in. So we'll come back to look at that. Second goal was the pothole plan. Use the fifth penny as it's available in six penny opportunities. I think we've accomplished this. We're working towards filling potholes. The fifth penny has, well, Dr. Rennie, where are we at on that? Ballot was approved yesterday by, the language was approved yesterday. Sixth penny, sorry. Sixth penny got me confused. Welcome back to you on that. You'll get a chance to talk about.
I have a question on that one.
Yes.
I did have somebody call a constituent call and ask if the both pothole crews are actually functioning and working right now. If we actually have two crews going.
More than that because we have people out in pickup trucks as well as hot trucks.
Oh, we remember we had, we were waiting for a trucker vehicle or something to come in, so we gave it to the second crew. And so that was the question is whether they were functional now.
I think we have a plus seven vehicles out. Are the capable of seven vehicles now to do potholes. Which I'm an expert at.
Is the pothole, is the pothole hotline actually still getting action?
Yeah, I have friends who put it in like.
So I think that's one that we can celebrate. We can check that one off, but we will keep working road maintenance. Road maintenance is not something that you do one day and it's over, right? We know this. Mr. Escobell is squinting on that one. He's, I think he might have been referring to me as the master of the obvious on that one. And I'm okay with that. Next goal was keeping up our services with anticipated growth. Cost analysis. We we charge one fifty for a permit. It costs us seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to do. Are, have we made progress on this?
Yes.
I think just went through. Second reading, right? So approved on second reading, so we're moving forward on that one. Hope I went too far. All right. But we still have a lot to do, right? I would check it off if we had got this one through on third reading. A comprehensive citywide drainage plan and implementation.
Definitely not.
Not there yet, right? So we will come back and look at these that we didn't check off and see if they need to stay on our list. Page two, we have three pages of infrastructure. Prioritizing the least to worst to establish our priorities on aging infrastructure. Where, where do you guys think we're at on this?
With with the fourteen million on the six penny ballot that address
And also with some of the other projects on the six penny, you know, Johnson Pool, Civic Center, even here. I think we're starting to address, but it's cost us in the future. So we have a handle on.
And I was going to say to you, I I won't speak for everybody, but I feel like Tom Cobb does an excellent job absolutely in his department and in the engineering department anyway. Of prioritizing and lining up those those projects and finding funding for those projects. So I yeah, again, I wouldn't completely check it off. Yeah, I'm not think we're making.
So no check mark.
Along those same lines, I think we're seeing a lot of this turnover of employees than we did the last couple, three years. Bring it on.
I wasn't here, so.
I agree with that perception, but things are so much less volatile, Scott.
Yes, we had a lot of talent left just because of the volatility with us.
I know. Tom was going to have some submarine trunks do inventory downtown.
We have to talk about it yesterday.
I don't know where they're at, but I know it was planned. They're out, Tom, and I see them every day.
They were out at seven forty-five this morning. They were on the street before I parked my truck this morning. So now.
Our CIP.
They might be potential Navy guys, Dr. Rennie. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
So we have, we have a lot accomplished, but not ready to check this one off. I think it was where we're at. Mayor Collins, what did you say about the capital improvement plan?
It's up to date at this point or.
So have we progressed with identifying the properties we don't need and the ready to liquidate?
I don't think that's one that we've got to, Councilman Leiborn. I don't think so.
Whose responsibility would that be?
I think probably our planning department.
Well, yeah, we'll come back to that. So hold on for that. So public safety, first responders, please fire EMTs. I think the research is done on the impact fee. And I think the six penny is going to get us new radios. If we can get this passed, it's going to get us some firehouses. We just, since I've been here with you guys, we have sworn in three new police officers. We just hired two new fire firemen.
It seemed like on six penny, the the fire and stuff like that, if it's been standalone or in something that's the same kind of bundle as the past.
Always.
When we've stuck things that would should have been together. That's what it did in the past.
So and I think we'll have some work to do on that as well, and we'll see that as we get deeper into this. But I checked off public safety. I think we have accomplished the goal that we set, we set out to accomplish for this.
And we've made some expenditures through, I'm sorry, through the making use of some CARES Act funding for for some of those expenditures too. Yeah, I mean.
The question I had was, I know that we've got some contractors right now who are doing the impact fee on a voluntary basis. And I know that we were working on an ordinance and wording to actually put that into place officially.
Second reading.
So moving in the right direction. Last infrastructure slide is county pockets. And this was that your stated goal was to work with the planning engineer to determine reasonable areas to consider. Work with the county commissioners and a partnership on what makes the most sense and what benefit all. Where do you guys think we're at on that? Is this one we can check off?
No, no. Done nothing.
Okay, so this is one that we might, might come back and look at.
So going back to that, was there discussion in January to absorb those county pockets and annex them or just?
The way, the way I read the report, Dr. Rennie, it was to determine whether or not they were worth pursuing. So I guess a question for you guys is, did you guys get this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I think when I I got a report that if we ex all the county pockets, it's thirty-four thousand dollars.
What was it? Thirty-four thousand dollars?
And the cost. Millions of lots.
Well, wasn't Charles Blue coming up with some data on that?
That's why I got the thirty-four thousand. They're working on trying to understand.
No, that's.
We're not there.
That's total.
Basically, the people who are going to county pocket now, we're already getting the they're already counting the city residents because you can't do a voting district for those small areas. So they just, they're just absorbing the city in our numbers. So we're already getting the sales tax revenue, fifth, sixth penny, those kinds of things for those folks. So just the property taxes, it's a pretty, it's a pretty small amount.
I would think the, the well and septic on those properties have got to be fifty, sixty, seventy years old.
I think they're going to actually come into the city. Depends if you guys think it's important enough, we can go after it, spend somebody to do it. It's just, you know, the brothers of this group.
No, and that and that'll show up when we get into which ones we're going to keep because I didn't put a red check on this one.
And I disagree. I don't think they will until they're forced to by needing water or septic system.
But I think that's.
I don't think they will. And even then, they may want to pay their hundred and fifty percent because I mean, we've had, we've had loan funds in the past, really, we're only at two percent to to do their improvements. And so many times by the time they pay for sewer water and half of their streets, it's more than what the value of their home is.
Or special improvement district.
So it has, it's going to have to be something that to do it individually. Don't think we're going to.
Well, that's what we did with the, with the ones.
Yeah.
But I mean, they, they, they keep.
They agreed to do it.
I mean, the reality is that six people vote, those people are in the city. So we have a hundred percent control. We just have to decide as a group, is this something we want to take on? Is it worth? Is it worth it? And if it is, we'll make it out. Is this something we want to take on? Is it worth, is it worth it? And if it is, we'll, we'll make it happen. So.
Right, and we'll come back to that. We'll see county pockets again tonight. The greenway expansion and maintenance.
Check.
I put a check mark on this. We have been to a couple of ribbon cutting, cuttings. Uh, I did, I got a three hour tour. And fortunately didn't get stranded on an island. And, and I wasn't with Gilligan either. I was with Councilman Leiborn, but I got a tour of his district and, and. Um, a great education on the greenway. It's, um. And we're seeing some progress. And it did make the six penny. So I think that's a great piece there, and I'm willing to check that off, although I think it's something that we look at every year. Councilman Labor were sharing with me that the only part of the master plan for the original greenway was this connection to the base. Now, I'll tell you, as a former service member, had I been stationed at Effie Warren and could get on my bike and ride downtown. And do stuff downtown and ride back, that would have been awesome. And that's the one piece that we're missing. And so I think that this is gonna show up year to year for us. And then this morning we had a conversation about even expanding that and making it a, a bigger loop while we were with the. The governor and his chief of staff today. So we'll have some more to talk about.
Before we leave, Andy.
Yes, sir.
I want to mention that in terms of planning and long-term understanding of this. I'm very concerned about how we connect from one side of nation way to the other. At the Reed Avenue corridor. Because the existing plan is inadequate and how we come back around. In that junction and down fifteen street is something that, uh. I'm disappointed we haven't been able to make any progress with fifteen street is a question of striping and signing. And so, but it also creates that expectation and, um. Coming up out of the wetland or the existing path that's there. I mean, the pieces are there, but I could tell you that on the, uh, Greenway committee. We haven't decided. Really understand that and act on it because there. We've got the, the new piece coming down along the creek. Behind the Philly, right across the street, across the crosswalk is the existing path. Wetland and up to Snyder. But that junction, um. To me is comparable to some of the issues we had when we started, when we had to make really tough decisions about. Whether our system was gonna be safe or not and. Certainly there are problems, but we should be talking to the highway department about it. I've got a preliminary design, uh. Of an overpass that the lease offers that possibility. But I, I really did want to make you all aware that, um. If we're gonna be serious about the, well, of course we are serious about the corridor. You have to get the greenway in there. Can't do it crossing the street and coming up. On the seventeenth street, which is what the design is now. I've brought this to their attention many times, but, uh, it's really. Uh, something that, um.
Yeah.
I'll be continuing to discuss this with you.
I just wanted to add that I think it's been really fortuitous that this happens to be the anniversary of the greenway. And it's on the six penny ballot. I think Gene Vetter's done an amazing job of keeping it out in front of the public. This whole spring and summer so far, and I think that's only going to help pass that six penny ballot initiative. So.
And when that passes, Pete, I think we have a lot of work to do on where the right first steps are on the greenway. Yes, sir, Mr. Figur.
Real quick, I think the pump house could be part of the greenway project as well. It's, it's right there. It could be a stopping place on the greenway as well as other uses. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
There's another, that's another site that we, we suggested to the Kiwanis too.
Charles Bloom about connecting the plaza to Holiday Park through fifteen street. And I mentioned to him about. You do it the least with the way, the way it's set up right now. We did the land swap. Try and get the plaza. Right now you have these guys from Nebraska. They, they live their cars there for a month. I was telling them it should just be a forty hour. Well, I was talking to some of the fellows that were working on the warehouse there. Proper term for it, but it's across the street there from the West Edge Collective and they bought it and they're beginning that process. And so. They're looking at that triangular piece of being adjacent there and looking at how. Possibly the railroad could work with us because they're evidently. All the original. Legal issues with selling and possibly get work with us and then we could work with that property. So all the way along down there to fifteen street, there's a lot of those issues. And if we could, uh, understand them better, I think it would help us, but it's. So tantalizing, so close.
Councilman Labor, we're gonna come back to infrastructure a second time, and when we do that, let's. Let's look at bringing some fifteen street infrastructure work on to our, our follow-on goals. Sir. Okay, alright, so the second piece that you guys looked at was downtown and West Edge and Reed Avenue corridor. Can we check this off? And we reviewed the project. Do we know where we want to go? Do we know how we want to use remaining six penny funds in that area?
Can we, I know in the last mayor's minute, he said that. Attorney Donald said we're making progress on that area. Can we give an update on that? Yes.
Be happy to. Members of council, mayor, we are in negotiations with Burlington Northern. They have been stalled for a couple of years. Because the railroad is just impossible to deal with. We are finally having a bit of a breakthrough and I'll share with you more privately that I think I've identified a legal lever. That we can use to encourage them to come to the table. Consequence of which would be fairly dire for them if they don't. Uh, once we get the Burlington to the table, then we want to discuss with them. How to actually do the red avenue corridor, but until we get them to the table, it's their right of way, not ours.
We have met though with the consultants and we've done a lot of the work that we said we do. We have identified the. The, the barriers at this point, and now we're just trying to, uh, ways to overcome those barriers. So I think we've done a lot of the work that we, we talked about, but we have a long ways to go.
Are we, are we still engaging the consultants or have we just kind of put them on hold? Cause I still know that they were especially helpful. It didn't sound like previously.
I think we put them pretty much on hold until we, till we get the right.
So we're not still spending money there. Okay.
So we've accomplished what we set out to do in January, but we have a lot more work to do on the Reed Avenue corridor. The meetings, the meetings that, that the mayor promised have taken place. And I don't think we are, still have the answers that we need, but we've made, we, we've accomplished what we set out to accomplish on that downtown.
We have the answers. We just don't like, and so now we're trying to change it.
Yeah, so that's means that I don't, you know, it's like you keep asking your parents, so you get what you're all right. You guys can remember back that far. Or those of us with kids. Downtown Core, DDA District gutters, curbs and streets. Where do you guys, where do you feel like we're at on this one?
We're alone.
And what, what was the goal?
Well, it's on six penny. But and there's, we've allocated a lot of money for work.
Yep.
So now whether or not the work gets done by that date, I don't know, but we, we allocated the funding. There's a plan in place. A lot of the work is supposed to be hopefully done by frontier days. We'll, we'll see.
Lock on the plaza though. There's, there's.
Yeah.
Plaza's come a long way.
So I don't know the work is, I don't, the work obviously won't be completed by the end of twelve thirty-one, but. We've made a lot of progress.
Yeah, I think we accomplished what, what we, what we set as a goal to accomplish. Did everything get done? No, and, and we still six months to get some of that work done, but this is a, this is a goal that you guys set. That progress has been made and it's required some pushing. I got some miles on my shoes walking with a couple of council, council people on it. Dr. Aldridge.
I was just gonna say, I, I had a, I was at a meeting today, um, at the college where a presentation was done by Dominic Bravo on, um. He, uh, he had to visit the tourism master plan. And then he also talked about the co- combining of the DDA. Um, this six month trial period or whatever they're in with the MOU and, um, it was. It was extremely impressive and I think everybody that was in the meet, in the room was impressed. And I think that. I, I think we've made great strides here and I think that even though that wasn't on here, that downtown four combining, uh, DDA and a visit. Is it called visit Cheyenne? Um, is, I think it's gonna hu- pay huge benefits. I think it's really a plus and I think people in the room were kind of like. It's about time because you know, they felt like we had taken out some of the redundancy, um, that had been taking place. So I thought it was a big plus.
So that's a good segue to the next goal and that's DDA funding and things have happened with DDA and Visit Cheyenne that Dr. Aldridge just referenced that. Might or might not help put a red check on this box or not.
Well, we've laid the foundation for a TIF.
Yes.
You are a and, and.
And, and the mayor found two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the DDA in this year's budget. Which they have not, they had zero last year for the city. So that's a huge, huge bump. Long-term, we need to find more, but it's long-term. So there's, there's a lot of good things here. We did do all investigations on the TIF. It's inspired. We can't bring it back. So. I think we've accomplished a lot of what we said we would try to do. And I think with the change with Visitchi, I am not really, that's a game changer. See a year from now, what does that look like and how's that work?
Is it a one year MOU?
It's a two.
Oh, two year, okay.
Two. So Steamshop and Roundhouse. We just, our, the work group is, is created. And that was the goal to get the work group together to research this and see what needs to be done with this. Mayor, do you want to?
Yeah, so we had a meeting scheduled, I think it was last week or maybe ten days ago and our president got COVID. And so we were back on the schedule for the next Monday, Mr. Seagull. The nineteen week from the. Yep, so we, we're meeting with the governor, the state tourism, um, the business council. We're gonna share this project with them, but I think we have some. Momentum and some excitement about this. The thing that, uh, Mr. Seagull and I talked about was, we just wanted the roundhouse people could see it. Well, they took that, they talked about building onto the roundhouse, creating static displays and putting it on steroids. And I'm so stinky excited about what this could look like if, if we can get it done. And so if we can get this done, it'll break two or three hundred thousand people a year. Conservatively, in my, in my estimation, to Cheyenne, just to see Big Boy, The Challenger and all the things that we'd be able to do. So. We're really excited about the plan that, uh, that the depot, uh.
You see.
Museum people have, have taken and, and ran with it. And, and so we'll see where we go from here, but, uh, we'll definitely do a work session on this one here. Uh, after frontier days at some point, share with you all exactly what, what they're, they're thinking about. We want to see if there's any way to fund it. And so that's why we're meeting with the governor to find out if they're willing to be partners on that.
Is the steam shop, is, is that building that's down by the underpass on Ames? No, what's the other name is that? It's a pump house. Okay, pump house. Okay.
So if you look at the roundhouse, the steam shop is kind of a little bit to the back, to the left of it, if you're looking from the depot. Anyways, it's, uh, we have a working group together. We have a, a better plan than ever dreamed that we would have, a vision that I, I never dreamed we could have. And, uh, we're gonna see if we can make it happen.
If you're aware of it, there's only two actual working steam shops in the United States. The other ones in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And so, I understand they're gonna get out. Big Boy or Challenger, I'm not sure which one. Go on tour early in August. So are we gonna have some information kind of, you know, this is what we're looking at? Because obviously they come a-running when they get them out and, and I think that would be an opportunity for us. Say, you know, this is what we're thinking and this is what we're working on, Tom, which I think would.
Don't think they've announced the route yet. Schedule, but yes, they, I, I do know the big boy's gonna go on another journey.
What about the, I'm just curious, the pump house, I see the pump house as being kind of part of the West Edge. Area and we had that lady who came and talked to us about, um, wanting to pursue roofing it. Is, does anybody know if there's any progress being made there?
I don't know of anything yet, but, uh, definitely should be. Basically, what I think, the first thing we need to do is establish a product, project manager. And they have someone who is going to be responsible for that information and how it works because it's a city project. With a lot of help from. Storage China Incorporated, but, um, a project manager is really what you need so that we can consistently have that and, uh. So I hope we can get one going.
Yeah, a little fun fact here was in the seventies, I worked with the city and I was in the parking meter department with Art Freak. We started four in the morning. We drive around those little cushions and empty parking meters and then we eat breakfast every day at the driftwood. And then we'd go, uh, change the money in and then work on, uh, parking meters, getting it fixed and it's up till noon. But our shop was the green part of that building. We were on the second floor of that in the seventies, shady vans.
I think that might be a good work session on a Friday, just to hear what, but the plans aren't what they're doing.
Right, next area that you guys talked about was the six penny and this was collaborating with county commissioners. Um, to get language and a ballot together, and I think we can check this one off. That's, that's been done and, and Dr. Rennie. I was gonna ask for an update with the, everything was passed, was it yesterday?
Yeah, the commissioners passed it. That's our language on Monday, turns out, and there were some changes that needed to be made to. Some corrections and numberings, so it turns out and I'm lost on it. Revisited, but it should be set soon.
So I appreciate.
Michael, you went to the.
I don't.
And everything smooth, smooth this up, you passed unanimously. A couple of minor tweaks at the last minute to align our city resolution with county resolution and. It's gonna roll forward now to approval from governing body next Monday night. And some modifications for Burns and Alves. Have a little ahead of the curve and had some errors in their resolutions. That's gonna be fixed. And I think it's headed for the ballot.
Thank you, Dr. Aldridge.
I know that we, this piece of what we checked out, but quite honestly, if we just stop here and we don't work hard to make sure that's.
We're not stopping here.
Okay.
We're gonna see six penny again, because that last sentence, I think is the most important piece to me as, as a resident. And that's communicating the ballot and why it's important and why it's important to support the outlined communities in our county and. And how they vote to support us here in the city as well. So, yeah, we're not done with the six penny. The next.
Is the chamber of commons gonna take a flag on that?
Yes.
Chamber leads, um, there's a lot of those crap, a lot of folks are jumping on some.
Well, and I think, and I think a lot of work has been done just simply on, on the, you know, the, the big improvement, at least in my opinion, is the way that this, this ballot is, is constructed. And the way it's written. It's gonna be an improvement. Oh, it could help with part of that.
I'm on education. Road reschedule, so, um, September, so we're, we're gonna try to get out and do our, we can really. Explain what not only our projects, but county's projects in small towns, so that everybody's educated as best we can. We'll advocate the best we can.
Is there a possibility? I mean, I know that there's a difference between educating and advocating, but is there a possibility that. We can actually create some sort of a, a video stream that would actually, rather than a PowerPoint, so that when people visit our website. It has a voiceover that they can watch the presentation. Rather than, you know, I mean, for people that aren't going to show up at those meetings, I think that's important.
And I think, uh, another part is you showing up at the meetings. You need maybe one or two of us to come along and ban a light.
I love it. Hopefully Commissioner Ball will be there and, uh, maybe somebody from the small towns. And so we'll, we'll have an egg that's the best we can.
I'll go back to your original question, Councilman Rodwell. That has been, um. Fun and educational for me as well, going with the mayor to county meetings and watching. The, the way that they're working together, that our governing body is working with the county commissioners and the progress that's being made. It's. When you, when you come from a group that if.
It hasn't always been so.
Yeah, well, I, I will tell you, this year has been extremely fun. To be an observer in that, and it's been good. I don't think we can check off seventh penny yet. I don't think we have made, um, the progress that we wanted to make on it in the first six months. So this one is. So this one is is not going to go away for us. The next thing that we have.
We can't do it until Sixth Penny.
Right.
Right. So there's just a timing issue here, but I think we're all committed to doing the Civic Center as a Seventh Penny project coming up. It's the next available, once the Six Penny's passed, the next available election, so.
So planning pieces on that, we've, we have work to do, and then we'll get Six Penny. On the budget, I think we can check off the budget. We passed a balanced budget. And. I've never been through a budgeting process that went as well as I thought. You, as a governing body, did with that, the directors, the information that they brought forth. I sat through almost every budgeting meeting. So pretty, pretty impressive. When you're a master chief and you get to tell people what to do and they don't do it. It slows things down. And so I thought that went quite well. There's some things up here on the on the board that we did not. Yet get to and that longevity pay, being able to fund Cheyenne University. Some HR consistency, which that goes back to the the statistics you're looking for on retention. It's going to take some time to build that. And I think that Darren has has a plan to do that. And we'll start looking at those numbers. Comparing things to twenty twenty, it's, it's not going to help us at all. Councilman Aldrich.
I was just.
Doctor Aldrich, sorry, man.
As long as you don't use the F word. So.
Friendly.
It rhymes with fire truck. Anyway, I was just going to say that one of my. Thoughts on this is that we have been talking, we talked about this at Goal Setting, and I don't see it in here, but we talked about it in employee handbook that Alessandra. Has been working on or.
We're rocking that.
Okay, and so it's close. And the other thing I was going to just mention was, one of the things that came out of the media, I was at at the college days, that in. July, they're going to actually do a workshop on doing what they call stay interviews. They said commonly businesses do exit interviews, but a new trend in HR is to do stay interviews. And to figure out why people are staying and then to enhance that. And I'm thinking that that might be something that might be really beneficial, because we do have some really long term employees. And what what causes them to stay versus those that we see churn pretty quickly? And maybe that would be beneficial for us to, you know, participate in that workshop and just find out about those interviews. I don't think there's a cost. So it might be something we're looking at.
Mr. Seagrave.
Just real quickly, I'm thrilled with. The numbers we're seeing from sales tax collection, yes, through three months. Yesterday's memo from Director Lockman was.
Great.
Very, very positive. So maybe some of these longevity. University. Cheyenne University. Maybe we can actually do some of those things now, since we're, it appears we're going to be in a better financial situation.
Well, that is, that is one that we'll continue to to follow.
Well, to follow up on that, I heard some employees. In part of the mayor's notes about that five thousand dollar bonus, what is the status of that?
That was something I wanted to talk about today, so.
And we'll come back. We'll have an opportunity to talk budget again. New revenue, I think we've met this goal. We met the goals that we were looking for on on new revenue. The. Go ahead, Mr. Seagrave.
I'm not sure I totally agree with that. We did have the grant writer on board, but. I was asking, have we pursued a lot of the water and sewer things that supposedly were in these CARES Acts? And American Recovery Act? And I, I at least have not heard that. So I I think we've created some revenue, but there's a ton of it out there that we really need to go after.
I guess one of those where the work has begun, but I wouldn't.
Well, I think it would be really helpful to have a running tally of. And I'm hoping that, is is it, is her name Renee? That Renee would be, I think most grant writers kind of keep a running tally of the dollars they've brought in. Or are working on. And I think that would be helpful, just to have that kind of as a. Yeah, she did. He's bound going. Grant writing is intense.
It takes, it takes a lot longer than you think to do those grants. Yeah, I just put my hand up. She's definitely working on it. We'll have, we'll have the, the U of U one goes out Friday for the woman that goes next to Dyson Event Center. The courts and the turf and all that kind of stuff. It's like a nightmare dollar ask of a winter. So that one. We got the second and last letter today. We have General Latens later, hopefully tomorrow. And then that goes out Friday, so. That'll be the fifth one.
Well, we had the three that went through financials that were already done, so.
So you're right, she's slower than than we'd like, but she's definitely working hard on it. We've got haste on, we've financed the bonds. We have the TIF through the URA. Now we can do that.
The uncollected funds, so I don't think that we've accomplished that. And I had talked to Robin about going out on a new proposal. For a new collection agency. We're using one out of Greeley right now, and they're not really aggressive. She and and she said that, she said that they're always aggressive in the beginning, but and they get comfortable and then they're not so aggressive and. That it was probably time to go out for.
If you're willing to walk in the lamp and and do business.
Ten o'clock in the morning. Let's let's make sure we know what time it was. It was not really rough.
Anyways, I think we've made some success in this.
All the money. Maintenance of roads, sticking to the plan for twenty twenty one. This was the stated goal. Can we check this one off?
Well, we have expended all of our Fifth Penny sales, the money that we had in reserve for that by the end of this year.
If it hasn't been expended, it will be.
It'll be committed.
Yes, no.
Since we didn't use any, we didn't use any money last year, did we, on puddles, in two hundred or five hundred thousand?
That's what we're using.
Was that a rollover?
The five million that we're using, part of that five million we're using?
Didn't want to do the plan where spent two hundred and fifty thousand, seventy five thousand was for safety.
That five million is part of the Six Penny, so those dollars are pre-bond market at this point. If they're not already.
But the money that was rolled over?
Yeah.
Is that part of that?
We've been, we've made a dent in all that stuff. We're there. We're doing well.
All right. And then my favorite, the East Cheyenne Community Park, which is close to my home. Can we red mark what we want to accomplish on this?
I think so, because at this point, we're waiting for. Master plan, master plan. I understand that, but we're kind of, you know, the only thing we do for the future is maybe kind of start setting aside improvements if we want to. Otherwise, that's going to be Six Penny next time.
Man, you've established some public access to.
We have eighteen months to get the master plan done by our stated goals in January. I think we can check that one. And collaboration. So this is another piece, going back to Mr. Rogal's initial question that started this whole conversation. The collaboration that I have been able to witness and and take part in, in some cases with you guys, has been pretty amazing. But there's two yellow highlights up there that I think we still need to be focused on, on our collaboration efforts. We'll be going out to the Bellwark Ranch Friday with seven vehicles. The states on board. The state parks are on board. We met today with Next Era Energy, and they're interested in in being a part of the park system out there. I think we can check this off, with the exception of those two yellow highlighted pieces, Councilman Seagrave.
I can speak to the North Park. I've been communicating with Jason Sanchez. And he has, he's indicated that there was some prior history, he's pulling it together. And we're go, we're going to move forward with that. We're going to try to put a committee together, anybody that's interested. And secure that section land for future development. So we're going to bring that back off balls. And, you know, best case is we could trade a section for a section somewhere. Something we already own that they need, that would be great. And I don't, I don't see that being developed in the near future, but just to secure it.
So Tom, which section you're talking about, like you still just request.
It's, it's owned by State Line Investments. It's between the current soccer fields, north to. You know, I think it'd be great to have an entrance off for a month. That would help a lot. As far as current, you know, development in the last few years, I don't see that, but if we secure that moment, I think that would be a great. Great thing for.
Well, and I think, and I think soccer associations, some of those other groups too, I mean, they're being as intimately, you know, as as you are, as I currently am. I think that's one of those situations too, Tom, where, you know, they're, they're willing to start throwing some skin in the game, I think, you know, just, you know, if if they see us. Starting to move, you know, move further with that. You know, I definitely feel like they're, they're mobilizing.
If we get the Bellwark open, I may not have to run again.
What about the Hines and the whole, I mean, I.
We have a potential, we have a potential buyer for that. And so there's collaborative efforts right now on being able to clear that up. Mayor, do you want to add something that?
Michelle, I can just tell you that. Leads and everybody is working with part of that project. There's a ton of collaboration going on. I don't feel as good about as I do the itching post, I think that went further along and. I feel like, I feel like we're really making great progress. And and I feel like we've got the right team moving forward and and hopefully Inspire is the right fire. We actually hired a investigative accounting person to check, to make sure they have the wherewithal to do this.
They do.
I believe we have a good project. We'll see if it works out. But, you know, having leads and Betsy, her team, you know, really working hard on this. They hired. As you met Mike Shaw, and they've hired Common and Hart to help us, you know, with some of the good stuff. So I think we're, I think we're on the right track. It's it's a slow process, as you can all imagine.
Everybody wants to do it with somebody else's money.
So they, they started the dirt work, got the apples. They got that all leveled out.
Yep.
So it's.
So maybe we can pull the highlight off the North Park. I wasn't aware of some of the things that Councilman Seagrave shared with us, but. I can also share with you that the collaborative efforts between the police department and CFP have been outstanding this year. Getting ready for the hundred and twenty fifth, big, big change up there at the park with with that collaboration. GBSD is on track. We've already met. North of Grumman's rep, North of Grumman will be here at the end of this month, and the mayor will be spending some time with North of Grumman. EUL. The mayor will probably jump in on this one.
I have a weekly meeting with, my message in this, I need to know where you're putting a shovel in the ground, or would you please? Just tell us you can't do it. We'll find another, another person. So. We're working through it. And I think we're getting close to the final decision.
I think we're going to be able to move from collab to maybe collabora on that one.
I would leave the highlight on most part personally, and and the pockets. I mean, I, again, I mean, there's, there's.
We'll come back to that and see what we need to set on that, improving quality of life. This is what, this is the statement we started with. Everything that you guys agreed upon. Has to be focused on that effort. That's in in, that's what the governing body exists for, right? To make the city a great place to live. Work and run a business. And that's, I think you have met that goal in everything that you put up there. I want to end the the celebration piece with this. And I tell you why, why I think this is important. You talk about stay interviews, Dr. Aldrich. People stay when they're recognized for their work. People stay when they are recognized for how they contribute to the bigger picture. Most of us know that. If you could be involved in something that's bigger than you, it's much more rewarding than just taking care of me. Here's some other things that you guys have done as a governing body that need to be celebrated. The URA and TIF has passed, the Affordable Housing Task Force. Has been established. The Community Technology Advisory Council has been established. The Innovation and Entrepreneur Advisory Council has been established. Thomas Heid's drainage issue, we're actually going to get some movement on it this year. We have an MOA and a plan to mitigate that problem. The administrative hearing process, which I think are going to benefit city employees. As the chief of staff, that's one of the things I care immensely about is our employees. And I think that administrative hearing process is going to be a great improvement for them. That's passed. We've hired a fire chief. Actually, we didn't hire a fire chief. We promoted John Copper to be our fire chief, and I think that was a great decision by the governing body. The police chief we've hired, these are all things to celebrate. So as the chief of staff, what I would ask you. Is that you recognize people when they deliver what you want them to deliver here. And I know you guys are pretty good at doing that. I've worked in organizations where people like Teresa work. Hours upon hours upon hours and never get thanked once or acknowledged once. And. One of the things that I like about this governing body is I think you guys are pretty good at it, and I would encourage you to continue it. That makes a huge difference. And why people get up in the morning and go to work. So thanks for doing that for the team that works here for the city. And that's the end of our accomplishments. Do you guys get a break?
No.
No breaks. Slave driver. So let's go back to infrastructure. We'll go through these again, and these are the ones that we didn't check off. So the purpose of this piece is, what do we need to add, if anything, to these goals? What do we need to refine on these goals? And are there other infrastructure pieces that we need to add to our twenty twenty one goals? Mr. Seagrave.
Updating computer systems, a couple of weeks ago, I emailed the mayor. I thought maybe we could find some money to do the permits and planning and development issues online. And you responded that the system's going to be bigger than this. So do we need to redefine this? Is it a bigger system that we're after?
Yeah, I think so, because what we need to give them to do is make sure that. It talks to everybody else. And so we have a couple of problems. We need to figure out a way to be able to take credit cards online. And have it work with our system and stop doing that currently. Pay maintenance, I believe it's called. It's not, it's not communicating the way we need it to communicate. And we need to make sure that. We can buy these as modules and maybe start with that one, but I think there's other things we need to do. So I think we need to update a lot of our computer systems.
Dr. Aldrich.
I was going to say, I, sorry, you know, on the last list that we had of things we've accomplished, I think one of the big things that was accomplished that wasn't on there. Is that we were successful in getting every full time permanent employee email, which I think is huge, just being able to communicate. And I think that meant a lot to them. So I think we should make sure we add that.
No, so, so what do we need to do?
They're working on it right now, trying to figure out the scope of the IT. Those guys are all, they're talking and working on that project, so.
As a governing body, what do we need to do?
I think we.
Appropriate money or?
I, I, we don't know what the ask is yet. I think they're trying to figure out, and what is the right answer? What is the right system? What would that cost us? So I think there'll be an ask turned back someday in the future.
The county commissioner has just purchased a program for public books and building. Or at least they selected one. So what's something similar that's selected one?
I'm wondering too, if sometimes if we would collaborate with the county in as much that. We would negotiate together if both entities use the same vendor, if we would get a better price, because we use that a lot in state government.
Consumer from the builder, the.
Even along with that, Maurice.
The BOP, you use the same system, and say, we just did ours through Tyler. So we're in the process of doing our own committee. Be software right now, so.
Is that who the county's using, do you know?
I think they do have some Tyler. I'm not sure if that's.
Within the city or two areas.
So that might be a piece that we put under collaboration, but would the goal be to have a system? That would allow residents in Cheyenne to pay fees to register for sports, do any, everything online? Would that, would that be the goal, to find a system that does that for us?
And my point of bringing that up is we just.
Yeah. What about the CARES Act funding? Have we determined whether that's something we could use CARES Act funding for?
Maybe these ARP. Maybe these ARP. We've been looking, we have.
Use system takes.
Um, it does say it's called back track, but I, I think what, um, what has happened that we select them into IT knowledge is that we have had to piecemeal and then everybody kind of does their thing in order to get automated. And it doesn't necessarily interface with everybody else. That seems to be the issue is that whatever we select, we're having to try to figure out whether or not enterprise will interface with it to, to accept payments and that kind of thing.
So we have ten different businesses working independently rather than one, one business that interfaces and works together. That's my goal.
And that's, I think, what.
There's some additional manual work, I think, that's happening to go on and forth to provide the service for the.
Eric and I, you're definitely working on this. I mean, I promise you, they're, 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 they're trying to figure out what, what they're thinking to do is we have talked about it. I mean, I have to give an update on what session where we're at. So.
I better believe those are sitting star size or a little bigger have gone down. So.
Yeah, there's no reason, no, no reason to reinvent the wheel. There are people that have figured it out. We just have to find that, find that answer.
And maybe one of the ideas, I don't know, this is just idea, we, I think it works pretty well at state level is that there is a, a list of vendors that are approved for use. And then agencies get to pick, you know, from that list, it, it, that's the preferred list, and that's who's supported. And in technology, there's only a list of certain items that our technology people support. And since you have sometimes lots of different chiefs doing their own tribe thing, that maybe we just need to give them a list to choose from. So just a thought.
It's definitely a big undertaking. You know, my thought would be is we would take like planning and development, we get that integrated, we won't third them, then we take the clerk, we would do them. We can't do all at once. It's, it's, it's going to take multiple years probably, but we have to think, we have to pick the software package and then take the pieces from there. That's what we're trying to identify. Who would be the best?
What is enterprise even the current?
They're, they're even trying to decide to determine exactly what is they need so that they can, they know what to ask for. So I think they're, they're working on.
With all the development going on, all the building permits and. Man, if we could automate that.
Planning first.
Also for our staff, so they might do, that they would come in, that you just open it up, it's right there. Yep.
Right. Well, and that would cause a smaller footprint for us to have to maintain and repair.
Yes.
I agree though. I, I would like to keep this as a goal if we could. Just it's one that I, it's one that I brought up and I just want to, I think it's going to take a while, but I'd like to be working towards it.
Keep that with a couple of other, um, defining pieces beneath it. So keeping our services, keeping up our services within anticipated growth.
Impact fee.
Yeah. Well, I thought the impact fee, impact fee passed on second reading. It did. So I think we kind of left that one up there just because when that one makes it through third reading, Mr. Resco, was that a question?
I did have a question. Did you, I wasn't able to attend the meeting today. Did you have anybody attend who is opposed or have you guys heard from anybody?
No, Chris.
When I talked to Mr. Ernst last week at the affordable housing thing or two weeks ago, he was very supportive of that. And he just said, you know, you know that this is going to make houses be more expensive. And I said, you know, we've got bigger expenses, the more houses we build. So, I mean, this kind of goes hand in hand.
Could have led to some acres in the real estate agents from yesterday.
Yeah, it was beyond capacity.
So this one stays.
I, I'll tell you, my fear here is we've, we've made some, some progress. But if the legislature votes and they take a lead, you would have half out of our budget, we're right back where we were in January. So I, I feel like we've made some progress, but, but I'm a little nervous about whether or not we're going to be able to keep our head above water. I feel like it's possible. We get up, they're going to pop us back down again. So we'll, we'll see how that works. But I think this next year with all the ARPA money, I think we're going to be okay for a while, but I just, I really do believe that that four million dollars, that hundred and five million dollars that cities towns accounts get. There's going to be a focus on that, I think at some point in the future. So, but that's the frustrating thing for me is I think we can do a good job of getting ahead of this, but I don't think, I don't think our destiny's in our hands.
But this doesn't really affect that, Patrick, because, I mean, my understanding is the money that comes from, from that fee is going to go into a dedicated fund. And we are going to receive guidelines on what it can be spent on, which means it's not necessarily going to help us if the legislature takes away that.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm also talking about parks and fire, police and all the other things that go, that aren't in those funds that are general funds, uh, things, keeping it with service. I look at, at that as just across the board. You know, having enough firefighters, having enough police officers, having enough people to take care of the new green space that's created as we grow. Those things all mostly come out of our, our general fund. And, uh, and so that, that's my big concern is as we, as we develop new revenue sources that help with some of that, that, uh, where February legislature could, legislature could literally take a couple of million dollars out of it and set us right back. But I guess that's my.
But then we haven't established, so we've set up a fund to help with infrastructure maybe and some with police and fire, but then I think we do need to leave that up there because we haven't really established a mechanism to pay for increase green space and, and staff.
That's, that's exactly what.
So that goal stays.
So is, yes. Impact fees were seven hundred and fifty bucks a house?
No, eighty thirty-one.
Thirty-one, we're still only looking at, if we do three thousand houses, we're still only looking at less than two and a half million dollars.
And new fire station is five hundred dollars and the engine and wood is a million. What's that? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I just had a question. I was wondering if you've heard anything from because we were told today that the state has made a decision not to touch any ARPA funds until they the legislature decides whether they're going to be able to do the match or the maintenance of effort on those ARPA funds.
Not a word, other than we met with them today to talk about, uh, some tours and things, but other than that, no.
I don't know if you've heard that same story.
I think we have our own ARPA funds and so. So we wanted for us to give those.
All right.
I think it just needs to stay up on.
Yeah, that it's staying, it's staying. I'm leaving that there. And the comprehensive citywide drainage plan, I think this is where the stormwater utility possibly fits.
Yep.
And that's what ought to be defined in there and that's.
So I have had a conversation with, um, Jim McDonald. There is a drainage utility plan that was done that could be updated. And it could be updated for, he thinks about twenty-five thousand dollars. If we did it brand new, it'd cost lots more than that. Um, but that, I think we need to update that drainage utility plan and set that money aside to do that so that then we can actually know what we're looking at long-term and see why.
I think he did that plan when he was city.
He did. Ten years ago.
What, I'd like to go, um, is the legislature, Mr. Leibert was there to testify in favor of it. It made a real big difference, uh, as somebody from a local level. Figure out a way to, to find drainage on a permanent basis. And they, they put together a program that almost acts like a BOPU type of an entity that that works on, uh, stormwater drainage. Uh, we have hundreds, if not thousands of detention blocks. We have no money to maintain or to go in and clean to make sure they function. We have trees literally go out in the middle of our, our creeks that we just can't have. And so we have no way of caring for that. So I would really like to pursue this. There's a couple of cities in Miami, I think Cody and somebody else is, is going through this process right now. And, uh, I'm going to see, uh, Matt, who's the mayor of Cody. In a couple, next, next week. And I want to talk to him a little bit more about how they're doing this to get a, a sense of how we can afford. Mike has done a great job of, of getting me the, the list of state statute, what we have to do, but there's questions that, that I want to get answered.
Is that the stormwater utility clean is what we're talking about?
Yeah, exactly. And so that, that's one of my goals is we've got to get, we've got to get a handle on that. We continue to ask developers to maintain drainage things and to give them to us. And we don't have any way to, we don't have the way to maintain them. So we need to come up with a plan for that. So we haven't had a chance to, we've been working on some other things. We haven't got that one done yet. But that's definitely high on my list. It's on the board in my office is, is one of the things we really need to accomplish.
So that one stays.
If you guys are pissed.
Yes.
Excuse me, I want to mention that our permit with the state for the Clean Water Act is coming up. And I know that, uh, Tom Cobb his office is working on it, but I mean, this isn't, uh, maybe this is a federal law that we will have to comply with. So we really want to dovetail the utility with that re-permit so that those people who issue the permit understand we're serious about this when proceeding with this. So I think that twenty-five thousand dollars uh, needs to be right away because when that we're way off complying with it. Really, that does not. Because it, it, it's like ADA, they can pull the trigger on you and then I, I can't imagine what we could do, but, uh, I really think we need to update that utility plans.
Well, that's certainly not a lot of money either. I'm hearing that. So I, so I'll, I'll work with Tom. We'll, we'll see what, get an RFP out or whatever we need to do to update that and get it before the governing bodies. I'll work on that.
Next item we left up there was the aging city infrastructure and affording to repair, replace it. I definitely think this one needs to stay. Um, we have work to do here. My question for the governing body would be, is the urban renewal authority a group that could be used? Well, to determine the properties.
They can't, they can only do things within a certain area, not.
Blighted, blinded.
Right.
So you have to do a study to prove there's light there. A district and, and as with the planning commission, there's a bunch of steps, but if there's a blinded area, we could help.
Doesn't, doesn't engineer Cobb have a program or system that he's identified which ropes need to be?
Yeah, we have a. And they're actually doing that with all this and the extra money that we're getting with, hopefully with the six penny and over twenty of the fifth penny, we're going to make a hell of a dent in that over the next four years.
So there is a plan?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah.
So.
And, um, oh gosh darn it, who's it from MPO, um, Chris, um, uh, that works over there. He did that for the city of our town for twelve years. And he is working with engineer Cobb to make sure that we've got the, the process to make sure our good roads don't get worse and start improving our bad roads.
So we are prioritizing.
Oh, absolutely.
We've identified some funding. The liquidating properties of we've accomplished.
I don't either. And I had talked to, um, Vicky Nimitzak about that one point. I, I think that we've talked about doing that, uh, inventory, but I really think that we need to make that a priority probably of to figure out what we even own and where, and whether we have a use for it or not, and then start to liquidate what we're not going to use or have it to trade.
But I'll share with you guys, one of the things that, that I'd like to do, old properties, if we have them and they're billable, maybe, maybe that we could prioritize those for looking for housing. If we already own the properties, uh, we, we could put those into a land bank and we could build affordable housing on top of them where we own the property, but the houses goes on top of it. That means housing is not a cost in the housing. We can make the houses a lot more, the housing a lot more affordable. And so as we go through that list, if it's not, it's not buildable, we want to get rid of it. But I would like to put in your head the idea that if we have a, a two acre area that we could build, you know, twenty unit apartment building by, uh, I would love to be able to, to, to look at doing that.
So you don't want to own it?
I was going to say, we don't want to be a landlord.
Oh, God.
We just put the land up.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. And then we, 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 yeah, we partnered with the developer, yeah, X tried housing in Florida or something like that.
Cause I'm not collecting.
I was going to say our collections.
Believe me, Mr. Seagrave. Loud and clear.
Yeah, we'll fix that one. Dr. Aldrich.
So that would be the hope that we're right on the, on the liquidation part. I mean, not, not really the part about holding on to them. Cause I, I love the idea, Mayor, of, of using some of those as, as SMC, SMC for some affordable housing. But then I, but I'm guessing though, then that the hope is, uh, with the ones that we do liquidate, then is, is the hope that we would then turn terminate proceeds back into the fund for the capital improvement plan.
I think a lot of sold properties now that go to.
If we were using.
Okay. Yeah, we think we have to be around that.
Yes.
But I guess I'm sort of the impression that which value we have.
But they tax us all.
Do you do if it's not being used for government use? So they're trained. So I guess that would be something I would like to see is, is just.
I got to start you guys. I'll, I'll, I'll get that list. I'll, I'll bring that priority. We'll get it done.
But not only that, Mayor, but just, just a continuation of, yeah, what, whether it goes to wrecking events or goes back into a fund to, to, to fund some of the CIP.
Can we consider the issue, I mean, like when we sold the Nards property? And, and if we work out a deal with with ERES or whatever they are, the stipulations on that property from the federal government was that it had, that the monies had them turned around to use on records.
Right.
Which we did, but I mean, we gave it to Rick Parish at the time and it just got kind of spread out over the system and stuff got repaired. But, you know, usually later stuff is again in disrepair and we're looking at the same thing. I, Casper, when they had, I wish we'd taken a note out of their playbook years ago, but when when they sell a piece of property, it goes into what they call their revolving land fund. And then they use that to seed the projects later on. And we've, you know, the money we used when we sold the land adjacent to the Atlas Hotel was like three hundred and twenty-nine thousand or something. We did put in a separate fund. It's just sitting there. I, you know, again, if we do something in the capital improvement plan, Brian, if it's a big thing, I understand that, but can't look at if we're going to sell our properties, building our own revolving land fund used for again, save money on big projects. And I know that's part of what we.
That's what Truce does.
That's what we tried to do with the six penny. But you know, I don't know if that three million's.
Well, and you're, and you're, this is some of that for matches, you know.
Right.
No, I, so Mark, that was not the be all and all idea, but I, I mean, that's.
Okay, but I just, rather than again, kind of spread it out and just have it.
Sure.
Or just lose it back into the general fund.
Yeah, I would like to build a separate fund that we can use for big seed money on big projects.
We have three hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Now, why did you say?
Teresa will explain to you what you can or.
So this stays, this goal stays. And I, I made a note to investigate the revolving land fund. Maybe put that under this goal and see.
Yeah.
How, how it's being run in other places and talk to Theresa and see how.
What about the last sentence up there? Uh, we hit the OPU regarding the clay pipes, realistic expectations and determine status for where we are in the project. Is that in the replacement of clay pipes across the community?
I think that came as reference to, to these old clay pipes who are getting roots in there and having backups and stuff.
I don't, I don't know that I haven't seen where we've done that piece yet, but maybe we have.
He's here.
He's here. No, I mean, we're, we're looking at that. That is something that no, there's not a straight correlation to bad clay pipe. We have clay pipes that's over a hundred years old and in great shape. It all depends on, you know, how it was put in, how it was embedded, if there's a lot of trees in the area, they'll tear it up. So um, we are checking on some new technology right now. You actually put a sound wave down the system through manholes. And they'll actually score that clay pipe and tell you on a scale from one to 10, if it has blockages.
Wow.
Or, and so it's just a quick thing we can do to see if we have problem areas. So it is something we're going to start incorporating, but you know, we're starting, we're starting to have problems with even some PVC pipe with tree roots. So.
But we also, we work with some of our city ordinances to, uh, stronger so that when people are, when we find them, we can affect people, they have an expectation of getting fixed.
Yes.
So, so they're working that for, for months now on revising that so we can protect people's from backups and things.
So I don't think we're ready to take that off until we have the actual status. All right. So that, that one is staying. That's good. County pockets. Does this need to stay? Yeah.
So to talk to you guys, do you, does county pockets bother you? Is this something you really thought we need to address?
I think it's crazy that we have, like in my ward, at least we, we have. I think it's crazy that we have, like in my ward at least, we we have a lot between college and Ridge that is like. It's like every other lot and um I think it becomes problematic and. I don't understand why we annex.
So when you say problematic, why is it problematic?
I think the roads aren't paved, so people are frustrated by the mud and the dirt and the dust. I uh we have one block of birch that's not paved and we've got people, two residents there that are on both on oxygen. In their seventies and eighties and are not, they're going to be forced to sell the home that they've paid off. Because they can't stand the dust coming up and we're sending a truck out and watering it down or putting in whatever we're doing as a city. They're actually on the one block of county pocket, so.
And again, that that's why Alice is living there.
Yeah.
Their house is cheaper because they live in a place with a dirt road.
Well.
Now, if they paid the dirt road, their house wouldn't have by that amount, so I guess I I I struggle with you guys with this being a a a large issue personally. Mr. Seeger.
Did do you hear from staff, fire, police, uh road maintenance?
No.
So that is a problem for them?
No.
It's not a problem.
Years.
So.
Or one, we don't.
I mean, in a perfect world, it'd be it'd be clean and they'd all be the same, um you know, cause we we can, we can fix this, I mean, we can literally annex these tomorrow. And right north is annexed smaller and they're in the city limits.
Well, that's what.
But then, but then again, the the number revenue that we're gonna get from those county pockets is so small and the cost of improvements is so large. Is this something we wanna do? And if it is, I I I'm your huckleberry, I hope get it done, it just, it's not, it's not at high of priority to me personally. So that's why I'm asking you if this is something you want me to work on.
Why do we, I don't understand why we annex everything around a property and allow a property not to be annexed.
Because that's why.
And while Charles Bloom said that there actually is, uh that we actually could cause everyone to have to annex.
We could six boats. So when you add, when you add, if it's a property, you can take, you can make the annexation larger and bring those other properties in as long as you have. You we meet the statutory requirement, so so we could actually, like let's say this is a a county pocket, this is this one here. You could bring that in with you when you come without even the permission, it is possible to do that, but in Wyoming, we've always agreed that. People finding so hard in annexations, we'll bring in pieces of property that want to be in China, but we won't force people to come. That's always been our way of doing it, but if we want to change that, we can do that. I just, I guess I just want some guidance from you guys and what is this important to you? And if it is, then um then we'll start being a little bit more aggressive on this.
Well, it's really hard to enforce any type of code or anything else when we have those pockets, so.
That came up that, I I disagree, I don't think we can enforce annexations, I think the legislature prohibited that several years ago. But but that came up as public service today and Seth found um. Said no state statute, there are some criteria where you can do it, he's supposed to give us that criteria.
Four says if it's if it's seventy-five percent surrounded, you can annex them without the permission. So county pocket by definition is a hundred percent. You can annex properties that are not even, they're just contiguous, we can annex those properties and as long as they don't object, they're in the city. And 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 it would, it means they have to be certain size with certain amount of uh of valuation before they're there. So I mean, we have, we have to do it, it just hasn't been the way in the past, and so I guess I'm asking for guidance and how you wanna, how you wanna.
I think we just, we'd just be picking a fight between litigation and between the residents and.
If we could find a way to make it affordable for the residents and to make it attractive to them and then to do it willingly.
So Mr. Seeger, when I first started on council, we hired Matt Ashby um out from Boulder, Colorado. To be our annexation coordinator, his only job was to go to every county pocket and ask somebody to be annexed. And we found that we owned, I don't know how many of those county pockets we owned in the county, in the city, we annexed all those and we brought over a third of them in. So we spent a lot of time in doing that, the county pockets that were left, they didn't want to be part of the city. And so if we if we want them to be part of the city, where they're gonna have to uh, we're gonna have to choose to use uh the exception and do it. Or wait until they're gone and somebody wants to redevelop those properties and when they get redeveloped, we force them in, Mr. Seeger.
I think if if we decided to to do it in advance, I think you would almost have to bond. And then those properties would have to pay additional taxes. For a twenty or twenty-five year period to pay that bond. Otherwise, I don't know.
I think when they exceed our bonding capacity.
Could, could we do something that if with the house or the property sells that um then it's required to be annexed?
Yeah, we can test.
We're in the first position.
So let me bring you back for a second. The stated goal was to work with the planning engineer to determine reasonable areas, do we still wanna do that? Do we wanna expend the the staff, time and energy in doing that? Is finding county pockets to bring into the city worthwhile, we we didn't state a goal that we were gonna go and. And force annex people, but the stated goal. Was to determine the reasonable areas, do we want to, do we wanna have staff focused on that? Is this a goal that we should keep?
I mean, back in the day, we were their agent, all they'd do is sign a piece of paper, we did all the work, we did the survey, we we brought it, we we they came to the meetings. Representative homeowners, we did everything we could to make it easy, so the loading room is in, believe me, these, the rest of these properties are are. They're they're tough.
I gotta be honest, I don't feel like I wanna spend our staff time on that.
I don't either.
Doctor Renee, you had started to say something and.
No, I I agree.
Cut you off.
You know, the other issue, you know, when I first got in council and I think some of the rest of us maybe thought that was. You know, I had to say, just go do it and get it done with, you know. But you know, then somebody explained to me that, you know, that's not fair to those of us that are in the city because when we bought our house. We paid for all this, we paid for the infrastructure, we paid for the streets, we paid for the water, we paid for the sewer. And so for us to go then do that at no cost.
Somebody else.
Somebody else isn't fair to everybody that's already paid that, so.
And and your point, Doctor, we have an area um above Persia where literally the sewage is floating on top of the road. And we're doing an improvement district right now uh with that neighborhood to uh to bring it up to standards, put sewer sewer water in there. Staff is working with those folks, so we're we're definitely willing to to spend staff time if if they want to, you know.
I agree.
Do an improvement district and and do that kind of stuff, um and I I'm really there, but I guess I'm just struggling about.
For the city to go do it and spend that, I don't think it's fair to those of us.
And if it is, we'll put the time into it, I have.
The only way to make it fair is if you, you know, did some. Whether you put it on the fifth penny and had people vote on it, say, yeah, I wanna tax myself to help these people out. Or have them vote on revenue bonds or whatever to do it, to me, that that's the only way I think that's fair. Is if to the rest of us that have already paid that.
Well, I think they've done their research, so.
Mr. Law was very concerned recently, a couple of years ago, maybe eighteen months, when we returned funds. That people given to us in escrow for their. Their turn came to uh come into the city and. We've done enough out there and things have progressed to the degree, it's a total lodge pod with available. Parcels throughout it that could be brought into the city and we can connect to. And if we don't do that, it's never gonna happen and furthermore, I'm thinking like along the. Dry Creek Parkway out there on the Greenway, um half of that road would be ours. If we were chose to do that, and I I think it's really unfair to the people that have that have participated. I think there's history that I wasn't quite aware of, of properties that get water and sewer. Now. But have been established businesses for many years and and so like the uh Wells Fargo Bank out there, is that right?
It's not in the city.
So I mean, there's a lot of questions, I I think the more you know, the better off you are, but I definitely believe that. Ignoring it is a really bad idea and progressive where we can, as we can, is a good idea. Because it just.
When I know that Mr. Ernst talked to me about that he's going to be talking or has been talking to Mr. Bloom about. The Orchard Valley situation because he needs to actually be able to take some sort of pipe through there from his new development to another new development. If they wanna develop that land, but he's gotta have access to Orchard Valley, so. I I don't know, I think that as we annex more and more land, we just need to. I eh even if we leave everybody alone that has been left alone, I I think we need to stop annexing around.
And we pretty much have, Michelle, I mean, in recent years, we tried whatever we could not to create. Because.
Yeah, we have.
Because of that, because of that stretch between the range and. Persia and to college.
And sometimes you can't, you can't avoid it, but.
No, but wherever we could, we've. We've really tried to avoid it, so we have been talking.
And I think those those residents in those county pockets, you know, every argument not to get it annexed.
Well, they're really, they're, a lot of them are getting very aged and I'm, that's why I was wondering if. We could put something in place where when this the property changed hands, that it had to come into the city.
You said the age board with those houses, a lot of that stuff is.
There was one neighbor dispute over there where. The city police has responded to him, one of the neighbors of the county sheriff. To the other. So keep the goal.
Bunch of redneck Missouri boys, let me tell you.
Government body, keep.
You're just fishing.
You getting your stamp renewed?
Well, I'd like to keep the second little box.
Definitely second.
And guys, if you, it's okay, I'll I'll talk to staff about uh the thing that Michelle talked about and that is, as we move forward. So. Yeah, so so I'll 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 work on that one, and and it will see, and we'll see, I'll report back with the planners and and how we would do that.
Brian, you guys have been, can you think of the county pocket we've created in the last few years?
No.
And we've even stretched some stuff to pull in the county.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've we've brought more in and we've definitely brought more in.
I mean, I I think we as a council and planning office. Has been really aware that we do.
But it's it's back in your mind every time we see an annexation, as we, I check to see if there's any.
I mean, you kind of brought it back up today with the E L and that little triangle in there.
It's it's definitely not a county pocket, by the way, not those annexed in like late eighteen nineties or nineteen hundreds. We actually annexed that way back in the day.
Yeah.
So if we go back and look, I believe it actually is part of the city.
But and 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 Charles and Charles and his staff.
Do we need to review the outside users agreement? So the, you know, if we if we give county pocket people one that use their septic, if we give water and sewers an outside user. Then they'll never.
Right.
That's our, that's our hammer.
Is that what we're doing with that subdivision that you were talking about?
No, they're they're actually in the annexing coming to the city, so.
So our board approves those, then they come to you guys. You guys have the final. And whether somebody gets it outside. Yes. So you, just so you know that, that's.
Okay.
Only your.
But that would, but that would create a burden for you guys if we.
No, no, it would create a burden for the person.
But I mean, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't cause you any kind of trouble.
No. No, they'd say, we're the nice guys, those tricks over there.
We keep the goal with the second statement. Keep the goal with the second statement, that's what I'm hearing from you. All right, downtown and West Edge.
The funds though that you put in there for, was it annexation funds? To be want to re-identify what you want to use that money.
So.
The annexation.
That was so hard, I remember we asked, I had a problem about that once, but it wasn't a lot of money and I don't remember those costs.
I think we established that.
That was. That's what he's referring to is is the. Do you remember what area that was?
That was Swan Ranch.
No.
I'll I'll talk to Rob again.
Wasn't it east, wasn't it east of Bull?
Yeah, downtown in West Edge, this is the one that we left up there, the downtown core DDA, district curb gutters and streets. Do we keep this as a stated goal?
Yes.
Do we need to edit anything that's up there or add anything to what's up there? I definitely wanna add that Greenway connection and how it works. Better understanding of that. We are. Got the pieces coming into the junction, don't have a good understanding of what's involved and. Numerous, well, not numerous times, several times we began the Greenway. We talked about it, worked on grade separations and overpasses where we needed them. And as a result, our system is top notch, but this is really important and I. I think we've come to understand it better and we'll see that it it should be a priority and should be. Definitely talk to the transportation department about what we can do and they're they're gonna be getting some. Non-motorized path system money for uh. Projects that we can join with work lines, we have. But it's it's gotta be there and right now. I'll tell you, the Greenway committee is, I mean, and undoubtedly you've done those. Smaller pieces and got those connections built and I'm all in favor of that. But if we don't connect downtown to the West Edge. As we're close to doing. You're not gonna get the bang for your buck. I think there's a couple, there's at least two other places that we need to look at that too, I would suggest Councilman Labor and that's when we look at Fifteenth Street and. The Roundhouse Steam Shop Development, that being able to include in there that Greenway connector that gets us across.
I think Walther is important with the Greenways, we can look into that.
Yep. Yes, and I think we make that a part of of the focus when we work on that. That Reed Avenue Corridor, Fifteenth Street, everything there is gonna give us an opportunity to do that.
I'm excited about that project, so I want to make sure we do it right.
Councilman Aldrich, you had your.
I was just gonna say, the tourism uh master plan that Dominic Bravo shared today. They had five hundred residents uh respond to their survey, which is amazing for a survey actually. And um ninety-one percent of those respondents support putting money into down the downtown development. And to the depot plaza. Yeah, yeah, but I just, I think that's important to know that if people from all across the city are supportive of that project and that they see, they take a lot of pride in that. And so I think that we need to continue to make that look good.
Love it.
Alright, next goal, six penny, this is where we get to go back to. What you were talking about, Doctor Aldrich, and I wrote this in myself for your consideration, but that's a collaborative marketing effort. I don't think we accomplish what we want to accomplish with the six penny, if we don't collaborate with other entities in the city and the county. To get the ordinance to to get the six penny passed. And I I will just, I'll give you from from the outside, my leadership Cheyenne class, we're already working on. Ways that our class can help market this, but I think it's also gonna take. Education from the governing body, marketing from the governing body, collaborating with the chamber. Collaborating with Visit Cheyenne and Leeds and others to do that, so the, what I would add to the six penny goal process, if. If I were king, which I'm not, I'm not even an elected official, but it would be that piece there, which we can take down or. We can leave up if you want, and does anybody else have anything to add to?
We're voting in just over two months. But I think it's September fifteenth, we get to vote.
Do we as as council people need to bring these bodies together in a room? Ask them what they're doing and what we can do to support them. I've talked to, for example, Wendy Volk, she's got a group that's interested in working, but I don't know what we can do to support them. Are we are are we as a governing body reaching out to these groups? Are we making ourselves available to speak if needed? Are we making ourselves available to speak if needed? To educate. I, I, I don't feel like we have a.
Yeah, I don't need to.
Well, we have to be very careful with that plan, so we're not advocating.
Educate, but.
City resources, or, and I've always been concerned over the years with these ballots. Where we're kind of, in my opinion, going pretty far with what we call education and information. It actually is more like advocacy.
Go right up to the line.
I think we went over the line, I, I think that's one of the things we need to be careful about. Because certainly there are resources out there and there are groups that we can work with. Both, you know, there's nothing wrong with an individual council person saying, I believe in this project, it's whether we're. Acting as the, as the group or, or bringing those resources out there, but. There is a whole big story to tell here and. I certainly believe that we need to. Do that immediately and, and I'm glad that Wendy is. What she did on the Christianson overpass was. Kind of advocacy you need and, and I think people, you know, I know that, uh. There was concern that, uh, her family and the property they own out there affected that decision, but. You know, that doesn't matter, but I know it, I know it's a Greenway in downtown. Uh, I certainly plan on doing everything I can. In advocacy and I think you. So. When are we going to have that meeting? I.
I think one of the things that's going to be important is that we have. Uh, talking points so that we're all giving the same message all the time. And so, and I don't know if we rely on the chamber or another group to put together those talking points. But, um, I think that's really important that we're, we're all on the same page, and I think maybe meeting with them to see how we can support them. Um, or what they need.
I think.
Or maybe they organize it, we attend.
I think those groups have to organize it, we have to support it. And they have, and we have to. Believe in what they're doing and obviously with those talking points. Just like our campaigns for office. Do it over and over and over again until you reach those people. And I'm really interested in reaching some of the younger people, younger than me. Because.
Well, I also think that it probably would be about.
You know, what, what it's going to do for them and their family, and it's just really not too much to add. Spend a little bit, you know, I think we really need to emphasize that no one in Cheyenne has to spend two hours in line. It's easy to vote, you can do it. In a number of quick ways and, uh. But they gotta know and they gotta think it's coming.
They gotta show up.
We have to share this over social media where they're, where they're telling others and, you know, family out on the Greenway. Downtown business, I mean, what we wouldn't have if we didn't have the sixth penny. Wouldn't have the library, wouldn't have the Botanic Gardens, you know? It's a sales job and you can't be shy in a sales job.
Kelsey, can you share your conversation with the, uh. City from Burns, the lady you spoke with, why she didn't want to be part of the Cheyenne ballot? I'm, I'm a words in your mouth, but I'll remind you, she said, we don't, we're not excited about that because on special elections, Cheyenne people don't come out. So we want to be attached to a Cheyenne project. She said, city people just don't show up for those elections. And I, I found that. Alarming and surprising.
Well, and she had the numbers, I mean, that was, she had researched those, those voting patterns and. I also think it's real important that we talk about helping our neighbors, keeping those. Communities alive and for instance, Judy out there, I, I'd love to get her talking about how. Over the years, they've completely redone their sewer system in Burns with these funds, I mean, you go like. This is where it went and that's what it went for, isn't that what we want? So. Whatever piece of it, it is that we need to, to communicate. But I, I do think you go beyond information to advocacy and that's. How that, where that line is and how we make sure that we're not crossing it, I think. County clerk can help us and I think. Mike can, but that is real clear.
Several signatures have indicated to me over the past six pennies that basically. You explain your why, you explain what it's going to do, the only thing you cannot do is say, vote yes. You can take it, really, is explain the project, why it's important, you just cannot say. Vote yes.
Doctor. But on the other hand, your anti-tax advocates to tell you people to vote no are well organized and well funded.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I worked for a BOSI's for ten years and we, every two years, we went out to raise money to pay our wages and our salaries. And in Carver County, which if you think raising money is hard in Cheyenne, try raising money in Carver County. Um, and one of the things that we did was as employees at the BOSI's, we and had a, a brochure that was printed by a. A PAC group, basically, and we went door to door, talking to our neighbors as employees, I think one of the pieces we're missing is that we have. Close to eight hundred employees with all of our part timers and our summer help is what I was told by the human resource department. Um, maybe it's an opportunity to pull, invite them all into the civic center. Um, you know, for two or three different sessions and say, hey, this is what, this is what they ask is, this is what we hope to do with the money. We need you to help, you know, share this with your neighbors and your friends and your family, because we have. Those people who I hope have invested interest in seeing this pass as well, that, um, will either. You know, everybody has a circle of influence, a sphere of influence, and if, e- even if each one of those people only tells ten people. That's eight thousand more than we had. So I think, I think they're one of our biggest assets and they could be some of our biggest components. But they're not going to be if we don't ask.
Yeah, so.
So one of the things you can do, those, um, we'll start identifying who the groups are that are out there wanting to do some stuff. Uh, ask them what we can do to help support it and, uh. My plan was to develop a PowerPoint with notes that we could each have and, and we can share that, um, you know, our sphere of influence, so. Uh, those are a few things that, you know, that I've taken notes with so far.
And Mayor, if you would add to that a video that Michael and I can work on that is informational to get that out. Maybe a TikTok video from Councilman.
TikTok, yeah. Have you done a TikTok? I would pay to see you do a TikTok.
We have to remember that early voting starts about with September. And a greater percentage of the public votes early nowadays. So. We can't be thinking we have to.
I think it's like September seventeenth, or I don't remember the exact. But that's enough of the day I have on my mind.
So do you want me to strike the, the wording or leave the wording? So six penny, that's a state of goal, seven penny, I think this stays, obviously it stays, we've got work to do on that. I, I, a- as a resident, not as the chief of staff, I think the seventh penny ideas that you guys have already talked about. It's very easy for me to support, um, many of the things we've talked about, and again, that takes from my perspective of education. Of the public, but I think seven penny stays, is there, is there opposition to that, or is there something that I'm not seeing?
You might, you'll, you'll have to extend the date. But, uh.
Well, the due date for action, so it's not very well defined, President White, um, but.
Well, we know that we can't do it till after six penny, which means we know we can't do it until twenty twenty-two.
Which would be like if we did a May election, we'd have to be planning in January, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then, so what is the action, the action could be, here's our plan. That we work on getting on the ballot, that's, that's all I'm saying, why I would be tempted to not pull that date, so we don't lose sight of. What needs to be done.
There are certain things that we have to do. I mean, those are things we have to do that even do a seventh penny.
Right. Can't we do our own seventh penny now? We can.
We can, but don't we have to invite them?
Well, the challenge is, is that it has to be after the six penny, there's a whole bunch of, of very, various tough rules. Being able to ask for just a few years, right? And I'd ask for how much the city gets by ourselves, you know, all the oil, gas outside and, uh, the park treasurer can't tell us that, so. So it can be really difficult to understand really what the dollar amounts that are going to come in, so we'll have some work to do, I'll work on that. I've never really wanted to do this.
Don't we have to give?
Yes.
I thought three.
One or two small cities.
I don't, I don't remember. They, they modified that.
So.
So that would be information that we would find before that December thirty-first date. I think is a good, so seven. Yep, seventh penny stays, definitely worth it, yes, sir.
Because some part of the sixth penny is going to pass. It may not be all of our prospects, but something's going to pass and there will be a six penny, so I don't see any reason to delay.
And that's why I didn't want to change the date.
But I also want to be careful that we don't. That we're not messaging that while we're trying to get the six penny to pass.
Absolutely not.
So I think, yeah, I don't think we talk about that until, because it just confuses the issue.
Right.
Yeah, no, it, you're, you're exactly right, Dr. Aldrich, I would just leave it like that, I can already hear. The, the voices from having the seventh penny mentioned in here. So I don't want to worry about that budget, we, we passed a balanced budget, do we want to add some goals for the rest of the year? That are centered on our budget, ma'am.
I would, I'd like to make sure that we do find the money to update that storm utility plan. But I also am really interested in looking at. Um, cemetery district because we still have a need for cemetery that we haven't addressed. They look in town as well as out, um, by their Boriums. And then also I think we are going to have to at some point make some decisions about the animal shelter, which is kind of like. Always the elephant in the room.
I would like to do a reappropriation, uh, for longevity, to restore longevity pay in Cheyenne University.
And I would like to get the employees that had been put into maintenance and operations back onto the general fund budget.
Mutant gardens, absolutely, yes.
So. And if we had, did we have anybody else besides Botanic Gardens that that happened to?
We have some, uh, people I think can use alternatives that are. That we need to maybe take a look at. I'll just put, I'll just put special funds. We'll, 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 we'll make you find a list of those and figure out how we're going to get them off.
Apparently there's going to be some. Overage funds now from fifth penny, do we need to do anything with that or is that all? Programs.
I think it's pretty well programmed in the tax, if I remember right, how much it's been overages, they were pretty careful to prescribe how much they're targeting.
So we don't need to do anything at this point.
It won't, it won't be, uh. Won't be until the tax is over, we probably can come over, which is November, January first of next year. Of twenty twenty-three, we vote next November.
I was under the impression that once we. Collected the amount stated, I think it was forty-two five.
Yeah.
That anything after that was already an overage.
That's right, but I'm not sure when, when we can actually start spending them, which I, I, I need to check on that. Not until the county tells. And then, and the fifth penny never stops till the, until the other time. Right, yeah.
So we'll add some statements to the budget goals for twenty twenty-one.
Was there anything else in the budget that people wanted to, uh, make a note of that we need to work on?
Impound lot.
Yes.
Please.
So I don't really have that in the budget, uh, because. We had an opportunity, uh, and I put it in my notes the other day, Lieutenant James. That was his project to, as part of his promotion to, uh, apply for captain, and he has a fairly, um. Interesting way of taking care of abandoned cars, we, we use the private sector. So I'd like to make abandoned cars a goal, if you guys are all okay with that, and then we'll just figure out how it works, but if Lieutenant James, assuming the captain James, I hope. Um, if he gets promoted, uh, and he sat through that with me. I, I think we have a very, he has a very unique, and, and might be the best way for us.
That be a work session?
Um, yeah, it was, once we got it, we can do it, he's, he's doing the investigation now to see if there's anybody that wants to play ball with us, but I would, I would hope that we would. I would come to you guys for, uh, education and then, uh, the, the ordinance changes that would be required, so definitely have a work session on that. But so if abandoned cars is one, if you guys are okay with, I, I love to expand on this, okay.
One of the things that came out of the public forum on a minimum safe, safe street width. Was that there is a shortage of storage for, um, recreational vehicles. And so people really don't have a lot of options unless they want to look out of town to store their vehicles, and so. I think that's going to be, we have some, we're going to have to remedy or, you know, talk to. Private business owners about increasing that maybe their storage capabilities. Before we can actually do anything with them, say, streetlets. Hard to.
I think that's some of these, that's an excuse.
Well, I think so too, but, but if you can make excuses, then.
Let me accuse us of owning the storage lots, right?
Well, yeah, I think we could all go buy some land and build.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, and maybe that will be a revenue stream, yeah. What about the, uh, fire plan A liability? Is that anything that we should be concerned about?
Heck, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I know we should be concerned, but that we should be trying to address it through our means, since a lot of it is our firefighters.
Yeah, you know, I don't really have a lot of. Influence of how it's going to be decided, the legislature's going to make that decision, or the courts will, uh, there's a lawsuit right now, the courts could make that decision for us, we hope. But if they don't, um, the legislature's going to make that decision, so I think what we have to spare, we're going to make, or it could get two million dollar a year into our budget. For the next like twenty or thirty years, so, uh, you know, kind of an unfunded mandate, so we put a million dollars in. Last year, I asked Robin to take a million dollars of reserves and put it into fund for that, um, as soon as we. So at least we have the first, the first payment, we can get stuck with that. But yeah, I, I think it's something to be concerned about, I'm just not sure where to position the legislature and the state, pretty much is driving the bus. They drove it off the ledge and they bankrupted it, and now I think they're going to come back to us to, uh, to pay for it, but maybe the courts will help us. We'll see, the ARPA funds will not allow any help in, uh. Return, return funds, unfortunately, that would have been a, a dream for us, but it's not available, so it's definitely something we're considering now.
Have we joined that lawsuit?
We, we interceded, we've, we've been there, there, we're writing briefs right now, we'd ask the court. To make a decision before the legislature meets in February, so we can go to the legislature and say, here's, you know. They, they can't make the excuse, we're waiting for you from the courts, we'd like to, we'd like to have that, so the judge knows that we're doing our best, but. So I believe it is next month, um, we will actually be included. And we're hoping that they'll make a quick decision, we'll know what the answers, Rock Springs has basically said, it's a state's problem, they need to fix it. Uh, we're just trying to protect our interests and, uh, Mr. Frank is trying to protect the interests of the fire people because he's.
I feel the same way, Rox brings us. But, um. You know, when we started looking at that issue ten, fifteen years ago. There was less than three hundred guys in that.
Two seventy.
All the time they tell you during fire part of negotiations that they pass away quickly, they don't.
Here's the problem. It's not with the firefighter, but it's their spouse, so when the firefighter dies, the spouse gets the pension and then when the, when the spouse is gone, then it gets on. And the last person, um, just retired on that, that plan, his wife divorced, that half his pension, said, I'll never. His wife divorced, that happens, pension said, I'll never retire. And apparently he just retired, so. So the last, the last fire guy is now.
Anything else you guys want to add to the budget goals for the rest of the year? Mr. Seagrave.
We need to address all the fire negotiations or we? We need to do anything budget wise for that at this point?
I think everything that was in black language, we have put in the budget. So we budgeted for ninety one firefighters. We we budgeted everything that was in the black language, we moved back to that. So I believe we are covered there unless the arbitrator decides that we need to add more to that.
I I was just curious. I don't know that I ever heard that we heard a result on the grant that was written while we were in arbitration.
Which grant?
Uh, to get additional firefighters.
Yeah, the safer grant, they they put another three hundred fifty million dollars in that grant.
Wow.
And decided now to push it back. We will hear probably till September or October. I checked on that again this morning.
Glad we didn't hire somebody.
And the same thing, uh, the same situation with the. AFG grant. They put another bunch of money in there and they moved, moved that back. So we have three grants outstanding there and we're just waiting to hear back on this.
Yeah. He talked a little bit about the bonus for the employees. So you'd like to discuss it, just being appropriate.
So I guess, you know, if you make it a goal, if this is something we want to do. I did poll you guys on on this issue and I thought we had a really clear thing, but then I heard. Back from a lot of you that maybe weren't as comfortable with with doing it. The numbers are like one point one million dollars for non central employees. And it's at one point six million for essential employees as defined by the federal government, not in our, our definition, but by that. It is legal to pay those fees through ARPA funds. So we can pay the one point one million dollars with the money that is revenue recovery. So we could pay that with that money and then we could pay the other for the essential people directly at our funds. So we have the money to do it, but I just felt like we didn't have a clear mandate anymore that. I think eight people said, yes, let's do it. And then I heard back from a couple of different people, I'm not comfortable doing it now. So I'm not sure that we have a mandate. I don't want to bring it forward to get employees hopes up if we're not in that.
In all actuality, I've been polled by several city employees.
I'm sure you have.
Yeah, we're hearing from a lot of them that are spending it and I got several this weekend. They're like, hey, where the hell is my money? So they're there, I mean.
Some of a couple of departments announced that they.
Yes, they did.
I'm not sure exactly how it all developed. I just know it's out in the street. So I I guess I'm looking, you can do it offline or however you guys want to do it, but I definitely need some direction.
Well, uh, my concern is that I, I guess I was, I was curious as to whether there is, and I think I wrote this to you. I think you have to pick a date of who was employed on this date. Uh, that's essential and non essential and both of there. I don't. If somebody got hired after everybody came back to work and we were post pandemic, I I don't know that we'll ever be post pandemic. But what we determined was post pandemic and or they just started. I I don't know that they qualify for that incentive. I think we need to, I think the people who were here during that incentive that are still with us, that I I just, that's my issue is that.
Last time we did it, zero to six months, six months to a year and then three year on.
I think what Michelle was talking about is that, you know, we do it like. First, you know, people working first, if you worked here a year, you get the full bonus and then going backwards, uh, you know, because. When, when did the pandemic end? But we have eight firefighters out of COVID right now. The pools were closed. Today, uh, because of that, why say, I mean, we're still in COVID times. So I think if you look at the ARPA funds, they would, they would consider that we are in those times and it would be appropriate to do that if you guys feel comfortable.
But there are some people, quite honestly, that started with us, maybe they started June first, that have not been impacted by COVID in in their ability.
And we would get two months of of the thing, they wouldn't get the full amount, they need two months of the month.
So you would.
Yeah, if you started, if you started June, July thirty first and we paid on August first, you'd get one day. Yeah, exactly. I mean, we're not going to give them the full benefit of of the bonus. You have to be here a full year to get the full benefit.
So.
And the part time employees would be also.
And I think five, five thousand. I I mean, how, do we actually know it's going to be that number? I don't, I don't know.
Would be a nice number that we've heard. No, it's just.
That's the number I propose.
That was arbitrary.
And with, with them not getting, uh, some of them haven't had a raise in three years. Three years.
It's a one time thing.
Yeah, right. And we took away longevity pay last year for, for COVID. Happy COVID. So I think this will help lessen staying.
My thought was we can't give them raises because our, our goal is to only use recurring revenue for things, but we can use one time limits to do it. Now was, that was the thought process that that went into the, the discussion. And so I guess. I just, I just heard enough rumblings that I just didn't feel comfortable asking a resolution. I asked for sponsors, I got one, um, so that, that made me nervous. And so, you know, I, I just, I just didn't have it to their directive.
So my question would be, and I believe this is the right thing to do unquestionably. But what are we not going to do with that money if we give it to the employees? Is there some other? I mean, there's that's the word that we are going to.
Misly, or that, that's a great question. You would definitely have an opportunity loss. I mean, there would be a project that we could view on homelessness, there could be a project we could do on water and sewer projects, there could be a broadband project. Project, all of those things are allowable by ARPA. Uh, and then the one million dollars we'd use for non, that's actually great money we could put in general fund and spend it. So there's definitely, uh, there's not.
I think taxpayers might have an issue with that. The one point one million out of general funds?
It's not general funds.
Well.
We could put it in the general funds. It's ARPA money.
Okay, so.
Yes, but we could, if we wanted to, we could put it in the general fund or we could put it in reserves.
But you said non essential would have to come out of non ARPA funds?
No, they would become ARPA funds, but they're revenue, revenue recovery money, which means that we are free to spend it however.
There's a different pot underneath the. So how much is beyond this? Billion and two, is that what you said?
I didn't understand the question.
So of those funds, how much is, are we going to receive or have received? In addition to that amount that's going to go to those.
So it's twelve million dollars total, we got about half of it. So we got just right at six million dollars already and in April we get the other six million dollars.
So what's the rest of money? What are you thinking for the twelve million minus the two?
I think that would be something for some work sessions coming up, you know? We don't have to spend the money until twenty twenty four. Uh, we have to commit the money through twenty twenty four and then we have till twenty twenty five to actually write the checks. So there's no hurry on our part to spend the money. I think we could deliver it in the way that we do that. I have shared with you, one of the things I'd like to do is maybe work on the homeless issue a little bit. One stop shop for all the homeless, uh, people or agencies, put them into one spot where, you know, if somebody came in. We can try to work on not duplicating services and give them all the abilities so we can get them each into a different silo. Um, or out of their silos and working together and then creating a, a loiter tree or a wet shelter. And so that could be like have families, a wet shelter, if everything would be all together in one location on campus. That would be something I'd love to do with some of these dollars.
Well, I think with, with the vote and play bonus, I think after the way for. COVID and everything else you're treating the last few years, so one of our biggest assets.
Yeah.
We got guys that, that last snowstorm, we had guys that were there thirty six, forty eight hours.
Sleeping in easy chairs and.
Yesterday now. So I think it didn't stop during COVID.
Our partners.
So what I'm, what I'm saying with that is let's reward it. And if, if the public comes in and asks me about it, I'll explain to them.
I just think that it needs to be prorated.
Okay, I agree completely.
Prorated based on the amount of their longevity.
Based on service, it's always, it's always been in there that, that would be that way from, from the very beginning. Our kind of employees would get based on their hours. Uh, people who have not been your year would get prorated in the maximum would be the five thousand.
I think, and I, and again, I think it's always with the caveat, this is a one time deal. Don't, don't anticipate this is going to be an annual event.
Right.
So.
I mean, unless revenues change.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'm not expecting that. Sorry guys, we don't qualify, so we're voting for everybody else.
I would be willing to help sponsor that.
You know, revenues.
I would as well.
Do we need to add anything for goals for new revenue? That was a good segue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pete Labor Tik Tok.
Yeah, well, you know, he raised a lot of money at Super Day.
Of anybody in the donkey.
How much did you raise, Pete?
I did get a figure.
The only thing I'd say about new revenues is if it's possibly related to the stormwater. System. We're going to have to find a revenue source for that.
Do you have any money?
You get a lot of bits.
So one of the things that you guys will see though is we still have the planning fees. We've done the analysis on planning, uh, firefighters or the fire department's done inspection fees. You will see some of those that's coming before you in the near future. Uh, revenue recovery to help pay for the cost of operating those. And I think the perfect example gives you charge a hundred and fifty dollars for an annexation. The one that we did on. Also six hundred and fifty eight hours just to publish it and this thing for another nine hundred and some dollars for staff. So it was like sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars and charged, you're going to charge a hundred and fifty dollars. And so those, those are the kinds of things that, uh, that we've investigated and I've, I've looked at it and I've found through them. We found some errors and corrected them. I think the numbers are pretty clear right now. And so you'll, you'll, you will definitely see those coming before you. We'll go from paying four percent of the cost of planning to twenty four percent or twenty five percent. And I don't, I don't remember what it is in the cost of inspections in the fire department. We get zero years now and we're trying to get some revenue recovery. They're working on what that would look like now.
What about it?
When was the last time you changed ones?
Nineteen ninety four.
What about a general business license? Because we have, uh, this came up in a conversation we were having, for instance, the adult. Uh, it's on the window, it says adult daycare. But in talking with the fire department and different people, they open a business without any going through any process with us. People assume, I think, that they've been inspected for fire and all those things. But because there, we don't have a general business license, businesses open and close every day and we have no ability to. Do a fire inspection of the building or anything else.
We actually, we actually do the fire inspections, we just were charged for. So I'll use my business as an example, bicycle station, I don't have to have a business license. Because I'm one of those businesses that are not regulated, but they still come in every, every year and they do a fire inspection. Um, and you all, all of those kinds of things.
Yeah, they do, but to then come in and go to the hassle of inspection and be told this is what you need to do and then charge me for it? No.
There you go. And so, uh.
Just saying.
So we have, I think about half of, about half of our businesses have fees, you know, like a grocery store.
Yeah.
But there's probably half of the businesses. And so, you know, that would definitely be something that could be looked at.
I.
Dennis, I think we should double.
I think mayor, um, I don't know, I, I mean, it could be a potential revenue stream, but that, but that's an efficiency. Thing, but yeah, Chief Copper's work as far as with the, the AMR, you know, we certainly the, uh. The ambulance stuff, dual response and those kinds of things. I mean, I, I don't know if that's something we add necessarily, but.
What about reviewing franchises?
He said dual response.
AMR responds, we, we go out with them.
Yeah, that, that, and then, and then I, I know Chief Copper.
By not doing that and saving money instead of new revenues.
Well, what's, what's, or charge, yeah, what's, what's, and and I thought that was sort of part of what he was working on. It was just the efficiency of that, the cost savings of it and then.
We're getting smaller trucks.
Yeah.
Three quarter, one tons.
And then assessing the cost of.
Got it.
Second, their basic paramedics.
Yeah.
Our guys with the advanced.
So.
Paramedics.
EMT ones and EMT twos, I think, is.
So the ambulance has an EMT and a paramedic on it. We have EMTs and a paramedic on our trucks. Anything else under revenues that we need to talk about?
It's small, but vehicle registrations. We really don't enforce the six month law. That here you work here. You're here for six months, you have to have your vehicle registered in the state of Wyoming. But some people get away with this, South Dakota doesn't have any residency requirement at all. So they'll just get some complete. If they, they do for ten years. This is your.
Is that something we can address or is that stated?
Well, the police department can enforce it. You know, they could say you live here, so you have to get your vehicle registered here. Give them a ticket.
Increase our revenues.
A little bit. The Montana issues on.
What's, what's the cost for a police department?
Do you guys want to talk about, um, the cost of parking downtown? Is that something that we want to talk about?
The cost of parking? And are you thinking like? In the garage?
Everywhere. We had a huge study done years ago that we never implemented. And it was, it was involved like metering on all the blocks and, and acquiring information. To where we could charge different amounts on different blocks at different times.
Like Salt Lake City does where they're, where you also pay by your phone.
Like, yeah.
So we don't have to have meter maids or whatever.
You have the kiosk for each block.
Yeah, like a lot of communities do, but we got, we dropped it like a hot potato.
Well, it's Salt Lake, it's, they don't use a kiosk, it's an actual individual meter at every space.
And Lincoln does that too. I mean, you just have an app.
Yeah.
Which is kind of what we do in the parking garage, I think.
For, for Collins, we park in Old Town, there's a sensor in the concrete. But somehow those how long you've been there.
What if you just go and roll it forward and backward?
I don't, I don't. I just know they've got a sensor. So there's a lot of different.
Well, they put enforcement parking around like.
I would just ask him if you want us to, uh, to investigate that more.
Yeah.
Is this, is this something that we?
Yeah.
I wish it paid for itself and that we didn't have to pay employees to monitor. If it would break even.
We just put a lot of money into that system we've gotten now. And I'm curious as to what.
What system do we have now?
We have a rolling forward truck, the block traffic.
John Orvis.
Serious?
Yes.
That's our parking plan is we have a truck that blocks people.
Yeah, well, that's a person that gets out and issues parking tickets. We got to sit behind it today.
It's a big truck and it locks. We have to go around it today.
It's like you. Yeah, instead of the little scooters.
Oh, my gosh. Maybe that's why they don't want to around the capital anymore.
You know, it's, this is a, one of those things, we're encouraging people and businesses to locate that town. Well, and then if we do too much with parking, we'll disparage all of that.
But most of its employees parking up front.
My issue with, what my issue with this is, it is exactly what Tom's saying is. That's been my part of my issue with being under the, the police department. And I, and I know I've, I've, I've talked to you guys about it. Yeah, where do you draw the line between encouragement and enforcement? But when you, I think when you're looking through, looking at through an enforcement lens.
I don't know.
Losing the encouragement.
I don't know, I mean, this validate where parking isn't under the auspices of police.
Who is ours under?
It's police now. It, it used to be its own.
Own parking division.
Entity, so.
I think, um, we are losing people. And so I want to wrap up and be done in three minutes so you guys can get home tonight.
I would ask if anybody has any personal goals that they'd written down that, that we, we should start considering.
Can we please go with the, did you get the answer you wanted on the, the bonuses?
Um, so I have a sponsor, sponsor, Michelle.
Okay, Mayor Collins, I do have a couple of things that I want to ask the, the governing body to think about. And that's the two handouts that I gave you when you came in. One is from Councilman Johnson, the issues that were brought to his attention. And then the other one is, is an email that I drafted for, for the mayor that went to Representative Henderson, who's working at the state level on some issues for us. So in January, we will do a twenty twenty two goal session. Where will it, will, we're done with twenty twenty one. Well, we'll be done with these goal sets, there'll be new goals that we look at. But these two documents that I gave you are, are feedback that have been provided to us about things that maybe we should be talking about or looking at. And then the, the five, the five, no, they're not paragraphs, they're basically bulleted items that we shared with. With Representative Henderson about things that we are looking at, at the city. And you'll find fire a on there is like item number two. But if you would take those and look at those and. There's things that need to land on the mayor's plate regarding those issues.
Last year or January, we did the full session, three nights, right?
Two nights.
Two nights. Would there be a way that you can incorporate or invite or drag in, hog time, our representatives that, for the city? From uh, the legislature, so that we could get some, maybe some onboarding?
So I'm just gonna do that, because next year, February, we're gonna have a budget session, and I'm gonna want to get our legislative meeting together with us.
Well, the, the deadline to file for bills and things is usually in December, right, or January, if it starts in February. I think it's so many days before session, so if we want.
Yeah, oh, you can file right after the first week or so of the session.
But in session, I think it's. Two weeks.
So I, I have a couple of things I wrote down, I, I would like to work on the homeless issue. I, I think that we need to put some resources into, you know, the devastation our clean and safe people are going through, Andy wrote down here. They need to uh, figure out how hazardous pay for our guys, they're going in hazards, cleaning up feces every day. I think we need to come up with a, a, a different pay scale for the, for at least for those hours that they're doing hazardous. Every day. Yep, uh, but the homeless is in the one-stop thing, I, I would like to make that a goal, to try and come up with some solutions. Yeah, exactly, to work with, with Robin, and try to develop one-stop shops, all of our agencies are working together, and then.
Mayor, if I could add to that, from our meeting, we met with a, with Robin, and there's a couple of, of our not-for-profits that would relocate on property that's near community shelter that she's trying to acquire. That would, this one-stop shop would be multiple not-for-profits that are focused on aiding the homeless, and maybe instead of the ER having them, we'd have a clinic on this site.
She tells me that cut those twenty-five or thirty people that are chronic with homeless, costs is between two, three million dollars a year. Between unpaid for medical care, damage to our parking structures, um, the time we have to incarcerate them and things, if we can find a way to get them in, into a wet shelter, where they're going to the prosthetics clinic, any of those kinds of things, it would make a real difference. Um, you know, I, I think we may can make some partnerships with the county or the hospital, we're gonna pay for some of these things, we have to jump into some of our ARPA funds. And we could maybe create a, a campus for them that would, would accomplish that, so if you guys are interested, I would like to work on that project. I'd like to work on affordable housing, um, as, as a goal, um, and I would also like uh, to work with the board of public utilities and water storage and supply. I'm terrified of the, the Colorado contact, is what's happening over there. I believe seventy percent of our water comes from the other side of the Colorado River, and if we get cut back or cut off of those water things, we will have hardly enough to take a shower in the morning. And so, uh, you know, what can we do to help them, um, with grants and whatever else we could do to find more water sources? Um, water supply, have that conversation about, uh, those things is a, is a goal for us to naturally, we're on the right page. Um, so those are a couple of things I've written down, and then just, you know, how can we, we're the number two tourism place in the state. And our roundhouse project, you know, I repeat, one, but could we look for some other tourism things to partner with, to try to get more people coming? They come, they spend money, but they leave, so they're not putting as much pressure on our infrastructure, so there's a couple of things that I've written down. I have quite a few more, but those are three or four big ones that I can work on.
Definitely continue to work on the bell wire.
Oh, yeah.
Such resources, but it would help the tourism.
That's huge. We, we could, I couldn't agree more.
What about the water issue with the data centers? Um, because of the amount of water that they use, um, or is that part of the planning that is going on to help them use gray water or to recycle water?
Right now, I think we're able to handle who we have here and who we anticipate's coming in. We've talked with them, we have encouraged them to look at recycle water system, and they've all said that they will, and that's part of the plan, so. It's just a process, but. Yeah, it's very, very important.
Part of my goal with, with the water thing would be, uh, wise water rules, we, we already talked about making smaller green areas, you know, suit up the waters much. But you know, could we look at zero-stating, could we look at some different things along those lines? Uh, I, I have no idea what that would look like, but I'd love, I'd love to have those conversations about how can we set ourselves up to use less water? So we're, we're setting ourselves up for the future, um, I just think that's gonna be a really, really big deal for us.
I, I totally agree with you, and maybe Brad, he could help, I don't know if he heard, I, I've heard that the town of Wellington is not going to approve any new subdivisions. Because of water.
Yes.
I've heard, I've heard that. And I'd hate to see us get to that point.
The last thing I have is a goal, you guys, is the census is out, so we're gonna have to redistrict, and uh, I'd like to make that one of our goals that we would.
That's like a have-to, that's not really a goal.
I've not heard the numbers, have you?
Uh, no, I, all we've heard so far, I've heard so far is just the, the overall state number, and I haven't heard county-wide or city-wide numbers yet. Um, I think we're supposed to get those, is it September? I, I think it's September, we're supposed to get those numbers, and then we, we have to make sure that each of our wards are equal in size. And so, and I don't know if that means we, we need to have more wards as the city grows, would it be, would it be smarter to have more wards? Um, with, with fewer people in those wards, you know, I think we should have the conversation about, you know, how do we move forward on that, do we, we need to have forwards? Um, with two people or five wards with two people, I don't know the answer, but um, you know, I, I think we should just have a conversation about how do we do that, cause as, as we get bigger and bigger. But redistricting is definitely something we gotta work on.
Mayor, with regard to the issue of homelessness, which I certainly agree with. Uh, meaning a goal, uh, that we have to have that as a goal moving forward. Uh, the previous administration had a consultant come in who actually prepared a pretty detailed report with recommendations, um, do you have a copy of that?
Um, I don't know that I do have a copy of that, but Robin shared with me quite a bit on it.
On what?
On homelessness. It was like about thirty, just like thirty pages, so I'll try and get you a copy of that, because it was well done, and there were some, some good suggestions in there.
Did, did we ever find out what happened with the, uh, we, it had come up in a work session about the shelter, I think you were gone fishing. The shelter on Snyder, did anybody ever hear results of that? Is that what it's called?
Fire, fire and police were supposed to go over.
I believe, I believe they have gone over and had a conversation. They can have beds in there, in the things, you know, I believe they have, I can check on them.
I just saw people lined up the other night out there, so I didn't know.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're definitely getting homeless services there, uh, and, and I think what I, what I'd love to encourage is, instead of groups doing things, you know, feeding people, what they do is they put money into a central area, like this one-stop shop that we'd have, and then we would, we would provide the services, that way, we have a little bit more control over how the homeless can. We, when we cleaned up the greenway, we found like three brand sleeping bags, backpacks, clothing that was discarded that they were given. And we're talking like tartar jackets and stuff that we just picked up and threw away, they were discarded along the creek, um, you know, so it, it just, it was an uncomfortable thing for, for me when we were cleaning up, and there's just, obviously, there's a lot of stuff being wasted, like dollars being wasted along those lines. So I'd like to get back to the area where we, we discourage people from giving money individually, uh, we, we put it into a central location. And then we use those dollars to pay for homeless services that would then, uh, maybe discourage people living on the street.
Why not duplicate efforts?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, it's a hurting that for guys, and we're always gonna have homelessness, but I'd love to, I'd love to work on trying to uh, to clean it up a little bit.
Well, I'd like to do away with some of the high apps. Under the bridge just doesn't get it, we need to modify that, so that there is not, actually, I'm gonna link in my bridge there, they've gone to condominiums. These, these people are the outlaws, okay, they don't wanna go to the shelter, they don't care about us. They are, and then they're, of course, the dangerous ones, so I'm very interested in making sure that we don't make the mistake other communities have of having a campground. An unregulated, uh, free-for-all campground, and that's basically what we've got under that bridge along the creek, so uh.
Wasn't that a bunch, under the Mori Avenue Bridge, they tapped into the power on one of the poles, they had an air conditioner and a TV.
And so, it seemed like we're wrapping up here, but in our public service, it really came up in regard to the uh, liens. Uh, what are we gonna do, and how are we gonna continue to have a fight-the-blight program? We learned a lot, we got some success, but I, we were uh confronted more or less by Cory, he said, you know, what have you done? We have these goals, you were gonna do this, and then it didn't happen, so. Um, and I really strongly feel that those bankers and realtors needed to understand uh, just like homelessness, those abandoned properties are, there's only one choice when they reach a certain point, and that's to demolish them. So. Do they understand that? Do they understand how many of them there are? And I'm really sorry that program faltered, but we did learn and we did make some progress, but it needs to be continuing, yeah, we need to look at those funding options and if, I really don't think that those people that were there at that meeting understood what happens to us, particularly in Ward One. When these problems really get intense, and those neighbors are telling us that, that squatters are making their neighborhood unlivable, we have to have a, a continuing answer and a funding source. And, and more than anything else, we have to convince those people that it's their community too, and what we're interested in is protecting.
Homelessness, uh, ARPA. That twelve million potentially, spend some of that money.
It's specifically, um, qualified homelessness is a specific approved.
But, but cleaning up these properties with the homeless.
I don't know that this, but I can check, that's a good, that's a good.
To think outside the box. Yeah, it wasn't about danger, it wasn't about.
I, I think they, there was.
So, uh, just so you guys know, I didn't eat with the uh, the realtors, and all those people, they would like to take a practice for a couple of months. And come back to us in September with a, a week, that they can help us accomplish this goal, we understand they approved it. They just would like to figure out a different way, so that's, you know, that's.
Let's take them on a tour.
Three-hour tour, Councilman Levy, she's gotta make sure the Philly Steakhouse is open.
Yeah.
So one other thing Richard brought up, there's chief minister still wanted to finish off the public safety building. Do you know what he wants to do?
I do, I actually brought it with me, uh, he, I've been working on this for a little bit, there, they uh, the, the cyber crimes area. They would like to move that up there, the area where they do their defensive tactics, they would like to move that, um, expand that area, um. There's, there's room up there, Andy and I went to a tour with them here a couple of weeks ago, and the money's, the money's left over in six pence from that project, it's like a million two or something left over, and so they're, they're working on the numbers.
Does it make sense to you?
It does.
Are we gonna look at, uh, one of the things we had talked about was looking at what we need as far as space for city government, city hall, um, and whether um, we wanted to put those dollars into this building, or whether we wanted to rethink what, what space we're using.
That's what we got in the six.
Right, but, uh, cause I, I don't know, I'm hesitant to do anything with three or four until we know what we're gonna do long-term here.
There's not a lot of room up there, I mean, it's, it's not like there's like a floor here, uh, the third floor, most of it's already been used, there's just uh, uh, a, a part of the third floor. And so unfortunately, right now almost every crime now has some sort of a, a computer or a phone, and they need to expand that department with people. Um, and then to teach their people how to not shoot people, but to use non-lethal ways to uh, to do it, they wanna expand that area so they can so they can have multiple trains along those, right now, everyone's standing to watch one guy, they wanna expand that so they can have two or three.
We don't want them using them.
Buffalo, they have that Paradise Ranch up there, they charge five thousand dollars a week, it's like city stuff. I know, really, and, yeah, five thousand dollars a week. We own a ranch.
Yeah, but they have cabins, they have great food, trout streams. Horses.
What's it called? Hey, I appreciate everybody, thank you for this, Andy, I will, uh, thanks, we, we will, we'll do a recap and get. I'm not fired?